And I am going to call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee. We are meeting via Zoom, so would people rise for the pledge of allegiance if you so choose? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart. Thank you. Okay, and so our guests won't be here until 6:10, correct? So I'll take this opportunity to read citizens' comments. As of 2:22 this afternoon, we had received 11, a request for citizens' comments, 10 of which expressed similar concerns in consulting with our council Mike Macaro. He said if there are similar themes in the statements submitted to citizens' comments, then it's okay to read a representative sampling. So I have selected three of them, but I prioritize them by the earliest date that they were received. All the emails, all the emails that we received for citizens' comments are available to the public via Freedom of Information Act request. So the first citizen's comment is from Karen and Bert Gould of Lancaster, and it was sent on Sunday, August 16th at 10:37 a.m. To the members of the Neshoba Regional School District School Committee. You are failing our students yet again. Your actions betray the trust reposed in you. What happened to the survey we were to receive? I want my education tax dollars for my student such that I can take that money to another facility willing to educate our high school sophomore in the only way they learn best. Please inform me as to how I can retrieve the funds associated with my student such that I can apply those funds to another learning environment. You speak about choice, yet you do not provide any meaningful choice whatsoever. I now want the choice to take my student and the funds associated with my student elsewhere. The teachers' union and this school committee are holding our kids hostage, and I for one will no longer put up with this. The second email is from Alyssa Walsh, who was a fourth grade teacher at Florence Sawyer. I would like to thank everyone involved for your tireless efforts this summer. There were no easy answers in these times, and your hard work has not gone unnoticed. I watched nearly every minute of the school committee meetings held this summer. Although I disagree with the decision to start the year in a hybrid model in lieu of waiting until it is safe, I respect the process and the decision. I'm writing today as a teacher who loves my job. I enjoy the collaboration with colleagues who share this passion. I look forward to getting to know a new classroom full of children each year. I take classes each summer to learn more, review what I know, and have new tools in my tool belt to reach all of my learners. I am also writing as a mother who is anxious, nervous, and some days frantic about how I am going to do the job that I love and also support the education of my own children. I'm being faced with the decision that women have fought for generations not to have to make that of choosing between work and family. My daughter is a first grader in a neighboring district. They are starting the year fully remote. She's the type of kid who worships the ground her teacher walks on. She thinks her school is the best school in the world. Her whole body changes when she learns new things. Her eyes light up, she gets excited all over, and there is an extra spring in her step. I know that when things return to normal, whatever that ends up looking like, no one will be happier to return to the school than she. But for now, she's devastated. As her mom, my job is to support her, to reassure her, and let her know that she is still going to learn how to read and how to do all the things she wants to do. In reality, however, I am terrified that I will not be able to do this effectively. We do not have consistent childcare available that can provide both supervision and academic support. As of now, the district has not provided any flexibility regarding how teachers can balance both. I am worried that I am prioritizing my job over my child's own education. We are two parent-working households. We rely on both incomes to survive. My husband works in mental health care. He has been working daily since the pandemic began, often in emergency rooms. Needless to say, no part of his job is remote. We are frantically trying to piece childcare together. At best, we can figure out three days right now, but that plan involves our daughter being in three different households. None of them can support her remote learning, but all of them definitely expose her to three different opportunities for contracting COVID and bringing it home to me where I could bring it into school. According to the CDC, an important guiding principle to remember is that the more people children interact with, the longer the interaction, the higher the risk of COVID spread. My fear is that without some flexibility regarding the children of staff and childcare, hundreds of children of district employees, including my own, are going to be exposed to multiple households each week. Each exposure brings the risk of infection, which could be asymptomatic and not noticed in time before spreading. I am fortunate enough to have a family without significant health issues. My colleagues and their families are not as lucky. All of our students and their families. Oh, it seems to me that by not allowing flexible childcare options for staff, a severe outbreak in our schools is inevitable. With some creative problem solving, I believe this could be prevented. I'd like to suggest three options that would solve many of the problems that staff are facing regarding childcare. First, if remote teachers are required to report to the school building each day, they should be allowed to bring their children on the days when they are not able to find adequate childcare. I easily manage simultaneous teaching my students in the spring and helping my daughter navigate her remote learning. Children are nothing if not excellent multitaskers, supporting 20 or more students with their work at a time. I am confident that this would be seamless. Second, remote teachers would have flexibility in which days they report to the school building and which days they work from home. This would allow us to fill the gaps we have during our weekly childcare arrangements. Third, and most importantly, school choice was open to children of staff for just this school year. This would allow staff and their children to align their schedules more consistently and cut down on the number of different households children visit for care each week. I do not want my daughter's friends to live 40 minutes away from us and would plan on transferring her back to the strong schools in our hometown. A one-year temporary provision would provide invaluable flexibility. Understand that some class sizes are large, and this is not possible. But I also know that due to some new hires, some classes do have that availability. I am hopeful that you consider my story in your final decision-making. Know that some of our neighboring districts, such as Acton, Boxboro, have incorporated some creative solutions to their support staff as educators and parents. Neshoba has some of the best educators in the country. By using flexibility, the district can show that they truly care about the social-emotional needs of their staff and the hard work we put in each and every day. Please show us the support that we need to be parents and professionals. Then the last one is from Stephanie Boyle. I didn't tell you, I don't think, the one from Alyssa was received on August 23rd at 11:22 a.m. This one is from Stephanie Boyle, a kindergarten teacher at Florence Sawyer. Received August 23rd at 7:41 p.m. I want to start by saying thank you, all of you, for all of your efforts. I recognize the enormity of the situation that we are all facing. I'm writing to express some concerns I have with the reopening of our schools. No easy or universally acceptable solutions, but I feel there are some aspects that are not being fairly considered in the decision-making process. One, mental health. I will be entering my 26th year of teaching, and I love what I do. A summer break is always a welcome respite. Right around August, I find myself naturally turning to address the challenges of a new school year. Normally, at this time of year, I am planning, organizing, creating, communicating, et cetera, for my new group of kindergartners. August is always a time of excitement and nervousness as I look ahead to a school year with five and six-year-olds. Who are they? How will we build our classroom community? What challenges will we face? How will we meet the needs of 20 young learners so everyone has a successful first-world experience? And myriad other questions that run through my mind every more August. Usually, my nervousness is positive, a drive to create a safe, comfortable, nurturing environment that will set the stage for my students to become lifelong learners. This August, however, I am overwhelmed with anxiety as to how we will be able to meet the needs of the students in our current situation. How can we justify keeping five- and six-year-olds sitting at desks facing in one direction for the majority of the day? How will we foster positive peer relationships when we are being directed to keep children apart? How will we encourage exploration, curiosity, and joy of learning if materials, collaboration, and play are not possible in an in-learning model? How will these restrictive practices affect the mental health and social development of our youngest learners? These questions and many others are keeping me up at night. Kindergarten in the beginning of the year is by design very flexible, with many opportunities for free-play recess and slow, deliberate pace to set a positive, nurturing classroom environment. A kindergarten classroom is loud, silly, joyful, and bursting with movement. I fear that without these opportunities, we will have children whose first-world experience will be negative, confining, and unnecessarily difficult. By contrast, a remote learning environment, while admittedly not ideal, would allow for daily interactions with teachers and peers, frequent movement breaks, use of manipulatives, ability to see faces and facial expressions, positive connections, et cetera. These will be difficult, if not impossible, in the current highly restricted hybrid classroom model being proposed. I'm very confident, I'm very concerned that the effects of the challenges of in-person learning in its current form on the mental health of students and educators will keep us from being able to reach the goals of our classroom socially, emotionally, and academically. Two, building safety comfort. I work in a Sawyer building, and I'm greatly concerned about the conditions that students and staff will be exposed to in an in-person return. With inadequate ventilation and air circulation, an unreliable heating system, and no air conditioning, the Sawyer building can be an uncomfortable place to be in the best of times. In a pandemic with masks and other PPE, restricted movement, no fans, limited air circulation, and mirror filters that are below recommended levels, it will be untenable for children and staff. I find it very difficult to reconcile that the meetings for planning our return to learning are being held virtually with many members at home for health and safety reasons, while the plans themselves are placing our students and staff in unsafe and highly restrictive conditions. Starting the year remotely with focused efforts on making the building safe and comfortable for all for an eventual return would better serve our students. Three, flexibility. I've heard the various arguments for teachers being mandated to teach from their classrooms. I understand the desire for consistency. This is a time for flexibility. I'm a single parent of an eight-year-old with asthma. I have 70-plus-year-old parents who live with me. I have grave concerns of what I could bring home to my family. Giving teachers the option to teach from home would go a long way to alleviate health concerns and cut down on sick time. Spent my summer researching viable virtual resources and techniques in order to teach my students to the best of my ability, no matter where that teaching is happening. To suggest that teachers need to be monitored when people all over the world are successfully working from home is frankly insulting. My ability to effectively teach is not determined by my location, by my passion for my work, and my willingness to go above and beyond to ensure my students have a joyful and successful learning experience. We have talked repeatedly about giving our students and their families options, flexibility, and understanding as they navigate these challenging times. I would ask that you do the same for our district's educators. Four, staffing. I would like to advocate for our Unit C staff, without whom our school does not function optimally. I've heard it suggested that if we go to a fully remote model, there was less of a need for support staff, but I would argue that we would need them even more than ever. These paraprofessionals are integral to our ability to meet the needs of our students, no matter what modality they are working in. Their support is imperative, and I would hope that you are able to see their importance in the smooth functioning of our school and meeting the needs of our care. I know that these times are difficult, unpredictable, and ever-changing, but I hope that we can work together to provide our students with an engaging, safe, and healthy learning experience. I am ready to meet the challenges of the school year ahead, connect my students, and make the best year possible. I ask that you seek out and listen to the educators of our district and support us in our efforts to keep our students, our families, and ourselves safe and healthy while providing a consistent and comprehensive learning experience. So again, there are additional citizens' comments that have been emailed to us, and they can be made available to anyone who wishes to see them by filing Freedom of Information Act request through the central office. So, Brooke, do we have some guests this evening?
We do. I see that Kimberly is online with us right now, and I'm hoping there she is. Hi, how are you?
How are you?
I'm great. It's not Kimberly, so thank you so much. So Tyler, this is you, so thank you so much for joining us. Really appreciate that. So I'm going to talk a little bit, give a little bit of backstory here about why Tyler's with us tonight. This is Tyler Mano. I hope I'm saying your last name right, from Bolton. And after our last school committee meeting, you'll recall during the meeting, I had mentioned about the first day back, just really briefly, that we had, I had alluded to this song by Thomas Rhett about Be a Light, and that I had connected that with some of Mark Brackett's thinking with regards to social-emotional learning, et cetera, and brought the two notions together. Unbeknownst to me, Tyler had done a fan video for Be a Light. And I know that I sent that around to our school committee members. And so what had happened is the next morning after our school committee meeting, his mother said, you know, just as an FYI, I heard you say this at the school committee meeting, and I thought you'd like to see a fan video that my son created for the Thomas Rhett song. And I just thought it was amazing. And you know, Tyler, the more I watched it, the more I noticed all these little extra things that you had thrown in there that I'm sure a lot of other people wouldn't have picked up. By the way, I also noticed that on our bus video as well. For example, the numbers, where you've got all the little, almost like exclamation marks going, and I saw the little extra stay safe and all those other things. And so all the little extras that are in there. So anyway, so she had emailed me this, the fan video on Thursday, and in my sleep Thursday night, I thought, you know what? We really need a bus video. And I know that Michelle Cody is with us this evening as well. And she had seen a bus video and said, you know, you might want to consider doing something like this, but you know, we didn't have, we didn't have access to somebody that could pull it together quickly, or what did that even look like? And of course, for Michelle and I, this is not our area of strength. However, it was Tyler's area of strength. So I emailed his mom, and I said, this is going to seem like such a random email response to you. First of all, saying thank you so much for sending the Be a Light video. And Tyler, I have to tell you, the last slide of that Be a Light video, where you've got all the hearts and all the hearts, those were your neighbors, I guess, right, that were in there as themed design? Which I thought was amazingly cool. So I said, you know, I don't know whether this is something that Tyler would even have any interest in. And that was, I think, just at the point in time when I realized that he was a grade eight student going into grade nine. So we weren't looking at a senior at the high school level. We're kind of looking at a senior at the middle school level. And I said to his mom, do you think that he's up to this? Do you think he can do this? She said, I'm pretty sure he can. Michelle and I thought we had nothing to lose. Michelle had a script that she had kind of typed up and said, I think we can do it like this. We had seen another video from another school district. And so we said, Tyler, do you think you can do this? He said, I can do this. And by golly, he did. And so he, Tyler, I had to giggle as I saw the credits at the end of the video, and I thought, you don't give yourself nearly enough credit. You directed, you produced, you staged, you hired the crew. I think your little brother is in there as well. Brought his friends that were in the bubble, the COVID bubble with him, and so, and got them all lined up, and he did the whole thing. So we want to share that video with you tonight. And so, Alita, I'm hoping that you're able to share the screen with us. And Tyler's, just hang tight with us here as we try to get this rolling. And this video, we will be sending out to our families this week. So whenever Alita's able to share the screen, and we'll play it so that you can see it. Oh, we have no sound. And we still have no sound. Goodness.
I think it's a settings issue in Zoom.
Yeah, so maybe, Alita, can we go back and take a look there and try that again? We hear sounds, so I think that's a good thing. Of course, that might be rich driving. Still no sound. There we go.
Our first priority is always about keeping our students and staff safe.
Do you have sound? We do have sounds, very slight, though.
Some will drive to school with a parent or sibling, and some will ride the big yellow bus. When you arrive at the bus stop, you should already have your mask on and have washed your hands or used hand sanitizer. And don't forget, practice social distancing from the moment you leave your house. When boarding the bus, be sure to keep a safe distance between you and the other students, and board one student at a time. Be sure to keep your driver safe and healthy, too, by avoiding fist bumps and high fives, even if you are happy to see them after such a long time away. A wave and a hello, though, are always welcome. You won't be allowed on the bus without a mask, so always keep an extra one in your backpack, just in case. When you prepare to get on the bus for the very first time this year, please tell the driver your name.
Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, Liam.
And they'll tell you the seat number to sit in.
Liam, can you go to seat 13 for me, please?
Yep.
This will be your seat for the year, going to and from school. Look above the windows to see the seat numbers. Look for the X on the seat and sit next to it, not on it. This year, X does not mark the spot. And remember, there should only be one student in each seat, unless you have a sibling who rides the bus with you. Sit facing in front of the bus and keep your hands and your legs out of the aisle. The windows will be open for air circulation on both warm and cold days, so be sure to dress appropriately. When you arrive at school, you will wait for instructions from your driver, who will let you know when it's okay to get off of the bus. Please exit the bus one seat at a time, starting at the front. And don't forget to practice social distancing on your way out. It's for everyone's safety. Once you've arrived at school, your school administration will take you through the next steps. After school, when you board the bus again, you'll sit in the same seat you sat in in the morning. Remember, students will be exiting the bus from their seat, which could either be in front of you or behind you. And that's why it's important to keep your hands and feet out of the aisle. We hope that you have a great year, Bishop. Let's all keep your feet, to keep everyone healthy and safe.
Awesome, thank you. Tyler, you just did an amazing job with it. Yes, look, everybody's doing the clouds.
Thank you so much. It was really, really fun, and I'm glad I got to do it. Like, I'm glad I got the opportunity to do it.
I understand you have an uncle in California that you had help you out a little bit or helped to guide you, too.
Yes, he was, yeah. I called him twice, just to prepare and stuff. It was, it definitely helped.
Oh, awesome. Well, you just did a great job. I know the quality of the tape doesn't come through as well as through email. We all know that. And so what we'll do when we send it out to the parents is we'll send it with the link, and then they can just get to it onto our website, and we'll post it on the front page of the website. We are just so proud of you, Tyler. We thank you so much for doing such a great job with that. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And special thanks to your mom for coming, being your sidekick there and helping us, too. So special thanks to your mom, too. Thank you. And you don't, we promise you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. It's all good.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you, Tyler.
Great job. Thank you. Okay, so I have a few updates. At our workshop on August 25th, we voted to hold future meetings in person, and we anticipated that we knew we couldn't have them in our usual location. But we anticipated that we would be able to find space in the district. And the Hale Middle School Library appeared to be our best options. However, yesterday, we found out that we are, if we met in Hale, we would not be in compliance with the Phase 3 reopening safety standards. So I just summarized the big ones that apply to us. So reopening Phase 3 mandatory safety standards, recommended best practices, and they also give you a checklist for indoor and outdoor events, and it was updated August 11. No activity at any indoor or outdoor event shall occur without meeting these COVID-19 workplace safety standards. The owner of the enterprise shall be responsible for meeting these standards. Each operator of an indoor event must monitor attendee entries and exits and limit occupancy at all times to eight persons per thousand square feet of accessible indoor floor space and no more than 25 persons. Occupancy counts in all cases must include attendees, staff, or other workers. Ensure separation of six feet or more between individuals where possible. Require face coverings for our workers and attendees, except where an individual is unable to wear a face mask due to a medical condition or disabilities. So given those guidelines, the only places that would support our imperfect meetings that are in the school district would be the gyms. Holding the meetings in the gyms would present challenges for our use of technology, including the ability of members to participate remotely if they needed to. So we have not identified a venue that would enable us to meet the Phase 3 mandatory safety standards. But at this point in time, I think it makes sense that we consider a motion to reconsider that vote. So do we want to do that first, and then we can talk about next steps? Let's see how the vote goes. Would anybody be interested in making a motion to reconsider that vote?
So moved.
Okay, Mary, can I have a second? Did anybody second? Oh, I saw Mike. Okay, so discussion and questions? Oh, I saw Mike. Okay. So discussion and questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Joseph?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I hate to be a stickler for the rules, but.
No, no, I need you to be a stickler for the rules, because I'm not.
Motion for reconsideration does not lie at this time. It's out of order. It would have to be a motion to rescind the vote.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Joseph. Okay. Would you like, anyone like to move to rescind the vote to meet in person?
I will move to rescind the vote to meet in person.
Thank you, Sharon. Anybody want a second? Mike Horish will second. Okay, now, just, and thank you, Joe. Don't ever hesitate to be the, the guy that makes us aware of Robert's rules. Okay, Mary?
So I'm reading from Parliamentary Procedures at a glance. And it says that, let me see, so number two, under rescind or repeal, says not in order when the subject can be reached by, quote, "reconsideration."
What's the difference?
Well, so there's like 14 things on, under reconsideration.
I interject, and I, with all, you know, I, I don't want to, this is why I'm pretty, you know, flexible with parliamentary procedure. I think our, what we want to do, we made a vote to do something and now we either have to rescind it or reconsider it. If we reconsider it, it sounds like we're, we're going to think, no, let's throw caution to the wind and just go. But if we rescind it, that means we take it back. I mean, in a nutshell, wouldn't that be what it is? I guess it doesn't, to me, it doesn't matter what we call it, as long as we take a vote to decide that, whatever, do you still want to move forward to the next meeting to meet in person? Or do we want to pull it back until we find a good place? That's what, that's what we want to do. So Joseph, what would we do?
Unfortunately, Madam Chairman, it, it does matter what you call it. And my understanding of the rules of order are that a motion for reconsideration only lies during the meeting in which the matter has been addressed. So. I'm sorry? I can't hear you. What was that?
Okay. So then it would, you could only reconsider, you could have reconsidered it on the 25th, but not now. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So we're looking at a motion to rescind that vote?
Correct.
Okay. And I think Sharon made that motion to rescind the vote. Correct, Sharon?
I think so.
Yep. And then Mike seconded it. Yes. So now we're discussing the topic which is meeting in person. So who would like to comment or ask a question?
No, I actually, I believe that the, the comments are basically, we're not, we're not voting to meet in person. We're voting to meet remotely in the, in the near future, or at least until we locate a place to be able to do it legally.
We are voting, as I understand it, and Joe, please correct me, we are voting to undo the vote that we had on the 25th. Is that correct, Joe?
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions? Leah?
So this isn't necessarily to debate or discuss the rescinding of the earlier vote. I would just like to know when discussion would be opened for, like, future meetings. So are we going to discuss that after this?
If we can have a brief discussion after the vote. Okay? Thank you.
Call the vote.
Are we ready to vote? Seeing no objection, Kath, and the vote is to rescind the vote to meet in person, which was made on the 25th. Kathy Codian, I vote yes to rescind. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
No.
Rich?
Yeah.
Joseph?
No.
Mike? Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Eve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Okay, do you have the tabulation? Alita?
Alita, you're muted?
I believe the only two knows were Joseph and Brett.
Okay. So we have, we rescinded the vote to meet remotely. So now, I mean, meet in person. So now I will allow five minutes for discussion about next steps. I would interject my own POV at this point. My inclination would be to charge Brooke with looking outside of the school district, I mean, in the town, but outside of our school buildings, for a viable option, understanding the needs that we would have to have for, to accommodate our technology and the ability of members to participate remotely if need be. So that's, that's all I have to say. Anyone else? Mary?
So if, if this hadn't come to light, that we could not be able to meet in person, I was going to ask that at a subsequent meeting, we would either revisit the vote or have a new vote due to the fact that a number of us, because of our age or physical pre, you know, pre-existing condition, or whatever we want to call it, will not be able to meet in person. And, you know, for, for example, I mean, being in, in, in my seventies and there's at least one other member of the committee who is in seventies and someone in the sixties, as well as the physical conditions, we are not the same as students or, or staff. There's no one in the staff, I don't believe, who is in his or her seventies. And so my request was going to be for a future meeting to put this on the agenda that we would take a vote because what we've been able to come up with and we tried out at the workshop did not work. And just to be able to participate through conference call, not being able to see everyone, is a distinct disadvantage. And so that's, that was going to be what I proposed, and that is still what I proposed. That depending on, I, unless there were technology so that the video also would be, be able to be simultaneous with the meeting, because everything that we've, we've found is Bolton Access, there's a delay. So that, let's say I were, I were remote, I could hear through a conference phone, but I wouldn't be able to see what was going on. And it puts the people who are remote at a distinct disadvantage. And, and so that's what I was going to say. And I may still have to bring that up, depending on what the future.
Okay, Mary. Someone else? Brett?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Rich, you're out of, I just, excuse me. I just recognized Brett.
Oh, I'm sorry. That you said Rich. Forgive me.
I'm sorry, Brett.
Again, Nick is very clear. Nobody on this committee is more important or less important than anybody else. Okay? So to think that we are more important or somehow an elite group, Mary is very misguided. Okay?
I beg your pardon. I'm going to interject. Excuse me. I'm the chair. I'm asking for to insert a point of order in line with our protocols. Now, we have a protocol that prohibits us from judgmental attacks against other members or anybody who's visiting us. Excuse me.
Mary's words were.
Brett, please let me finish. I'm the chair. This is our protocol. I think you can make your point without having to make a judgmental comment. That's all I wanted to say. So I hear, what I heard you start to say was that you're concerned that by us not going forward with this model, it sends a message that we are somehow exempt from any of the considerations. So please continue, but please bear in mind our protocol.
Very loudly, Kathy, very loudly. We need to meet in person. We are expecting our teachers and our students and our staff to be in the buildings. Then we need to be in person. And to think that we are somehow better or different than, than all of those people is very misguided. So we need to be in person. Simple as that.
Okay, thank you. Someone else? Rich, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Uh, yeah. So my comment is that I don't understand completely, nor am I wanting to explore what we need to have a public meeting in terms of space and people. Technology-wise, I am more than confident that we can solve this issue. I actually talked to somebody that runs public meetings on a regular basis. And I have a solution that we can, we can do this actually quite easily, in my opinion, for a very low cost, where you, you put together these table microphones for the people that are in person. And that can all be fed into the computer that's broadcasting the Zoom conference, in which case, anybody remotely, whether it be my colleague from Bolton or, or, or anybody else that's listening, would, would not have any problem hearing or participating.
Okay.
So I'd be happy to talk to whoever wants to do with that. That doesn't take, that, that's just the technical side of producing it. I don't, I don't quite understand the implications about, you know, having, how many people we can have in a room and all that, you know, space per whatever. But if it's a technical issue, I'm sure that we could solve it actually very easily.
Thank you. Sharon? Sharon, I think you're muted.
Sorry. I, I, I don't think that the question is whether or not we ever have an in-person meeting, but whether it works to do it right now. And right now, there are some obstacles that we're facing that make it inequitable for people who can't be at the meeting, that make it illegal because we can't follow the guidelines. And I have concerns about asking people, whoever would be charged with this task of finding a space and getting all the technology set up and, and getting all the boxes checked so that we could do this legally right now. Because everybody is working full tilt right now, trying to get our kids back to school. I think that right now, it's a better use of our time and our resources to put this on the back burner. And when things get more settled, and so we are into the school year and, and we know that we've got ourselves in a good position, we can revisit this and we can fix. Happen. I don't think that's really the question. The question is, is it safe to do it now? And is it reasonable, to me, the question is, is it reasonable to put time and effort into doing that when it takes away from potentially somebody else's time and effort that should be spent somewhere else?
Thank you. Other comments, questions, Leah?
So I just wanted to say perhaps, well, first of all, I wanted to say that the Stowe Community Center has a very large room that could host us. But I also find it fascinating that the rules that apply to regular business meetings are different than the rules that apply to the classroom. That's basically what's preventing us, right? It's like Massachusetts has created a duplicitous situation, which is very disingenuous.
Yes.
And that is, I think, the most egregious matter before us right now. So putting that aside, Governor Baker, what I would like to know is perhaps maybe the district could do just a very quick feasibility study for us to say like, this is what it's going to take. Do you want us to move forward?
Yep.
Because I hear Sharon's point. I certainly hear Brett's point. I hear Mary's point. They're all valid. Maybe we could do a feasibility study to see if it's possible.
Yep. Thank you. Um, the, I don't think anybody was suggesting that we do Zoom forever, or remote forever. But we made the same assumption about consistency between people who are engaged in the schools, like school committee, and thought that the same rules would apply to us. But we found out just yesterday that they do not. And Brooke had shared with me about, in a neighboring town, a meeting that was shut down in the middle of it because somebody dropped a dime, I guess, and they were non-compliant. So I think the issue is where we meet, where can we meet in person? And how can we make it amenable to those members who, for whatever reason? And it's not always, I mean, there are people that have participated remotely because they've been on business trips or because of something, an obligation at home. So I think that that is, is what the intention, and, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but that for right now, we don't have a solution that make, that allows us to be in compliance with the state regulations. And so, as I said originally, I think that you used the word feasibility study. We could certainly do that. I, I think that Brooke has the personnel in her office that could do a feasibility study, bring some options to us. Because as soon as we get outside of our school district buildings, then there are, I guess, standards and criteria that we would have to meet for whomever we're doing it with. So what I've heard is a suggestion about the Stowe Community Center. Rich has some ideas about, that he can share about technology and that it makes sense to begin to, 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 to do it with the understanding that the efforts of Brooke's team for the next week at least is getting the schools up and running and make sure everything is what it should be there. Amy, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, the only other thought I would add to the feasibility study is seeing if there is another school district who has figured out how to do this. And trying not to reinvent the wheel, like somebody local. Because my, I, I did reach out to Mary to let her know that I underestimated the challenges that would, she would be facing with a remote participation, because this is something I do on a weekly basis for my job. I participate remotely in a meeting where people are sitting around a table. So I know that we're looking at something slightly different, but I, I think there's probably a solution. Just whether or not we can figure it out, given everything else.
Amy, did you have something?
Yes. I, I think that part of, part of the argument that's, that's being used is that this is optics. And that, don't do as I do, do as I say. And the problem here is that we're dealing with apples and oranges. Number one, a kind of meeting with 25 or more people sitting around with the space that is needed to adequately protect all of those 25 people. Number two, the technology that would need to be invested in. Number three, if you try the Pompo Center, that means it's got to be cleaned down totally deep cleaned before we get there. It's got to be totally deep cleaned after we get, after we've finished, if that's any kind of a, a system. And not only, and, and not, on top of that, you've got the issue of, you know, the technology, which I'm sure that issue can be overcome. The, the other issue of playing by different rules, there are different rules, whether we like it or not. And one set of rules, putting people into, putting one person in a classroom as opposed to putting 25 people in a room, socially distancing, we're talking two different things here. And I, while I agree with the comment that's been made, some of the comments that have been made, yes, this is an optics thing. And the optics are, do as I say, not as I do. And I think we have to accept that. And I think we have to accept that. But then again, being one of those seventy-year-old people here on this committee, as well as having the pre-existing conditions, I can say that I would not be anxious to return to a, to a uh, face-to-face meeting. Although, we did do it in um, a, a couple of weeks ago at the, at, at these session that we had. And while it was not optimal as far as being able to have uh, good intercourse with each other, I think uh, the fact, the, the fact that we did have trouble technically with that is something that really needs to be resolved before we go back into meeting face-to-face with some people being remote.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything new to add to the discussion? What I've heard is that it is our ultimate goal to be able to meet in person, but in ways that will allow us to both be compliant with the state um, standards, but also to accommodate people who need to, who for whatever reason may need at some point in time or always um, participate remotely. Um, I heard that Rich may have some ideas for um, technology and that it might be idea to do a feasibility study. And all of these ideas, um, in my mind, would be turned over to Brooke uh, to delegate to those folks who can uh, uh, be the most adept at getting us the information we need. Now that being said, it may be um, it may be able to be done for the next meeting. It may not be, but we need to be ready for that possibility. So, um, Joseph?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. You were sort of on my wavelength when you, when your last comments there. You know, from my perspective, and I only speak as one-eleventh of the committee, you know, I concur with my, my colleague from Lancaster. I do think that it's important that we meet, and optimally it would be best to meet in one of our school facilities. If that's not feasible, then we can look at other municipal facilities. But uh, just going off of what you just said, I'm looking at the calendar here. And as far as, you know, the possibility of a feasibility study, I was either going to ask or even move on it that we have a date certain for the completion of that. I was looking at October seventh. I think that gives, you know, the month or so for us to do that. We're not, we're going to rush the, the administration because they do have reopening responsibilities coming up. But um, I, I was just going to throw it out for consideration that perhaps we look at October seventh for the completion of that, that report. And if you're, if you desire us, I'll actually make a motion to that respect, so.
Okay, just hold the motion for one second. Brooke, would that be doable for you, October seventh? Okay. Joe, you want to make a motion?
Certainly, Madam Chairman. Uh, thank you. Uh, I would move that uh, we task the administration with completing a feasibility study for purposes of establishing whether it would be feasible for the committee to meet in person primarily within one of the school facilities, or if not, within a municipal facility within the district.
And make a recommendation?
I make a recommendation in that regard, sure.
Can I have a second, please?
A second?
Leah's second. Any further questions or discussion? Mike?
Does the motion put forth suggest that between now and then, we are going to be meeting remotely?
I think the assumption would be that we would need to meet remotely, so that would be the next two meetings. Mary?
I didn't hear anything in the motion about the, uh, maybe it's implicit, Joe, that the technology would be such that anyone would be able to participate remotely and be able to see and hear simultaneously with the meeting what's going on.
That would be part of the conditions I sent to Brooke, that I have noted. That they would have to be, have technology sufficient to conduct the meeting and also to allow people to participate remotely. Plus, the requirements that we are compliant with the Phase Three um, regulations regarding um, in, indoor meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Is everyone ready to vote? Okay. So we are voting um, for, to charge Brooke with conducting a feasibility study to be completed and presented to the school committee on October seventh. The goal of which is to determine um, well, the feasibility of being able to meet in public with that as our goal, under the conditions that we are compliant with the Phase Three regulations for indoor meetings, and that it meets our requirements uh, with regard to technology. You know, that's kind of long-winded, so I think my, um, Joe made the motion. And um, who said, Leah, did you second? Yeah, Leah seconded. Okay. Um, I vote yes. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
abstained.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Thank you. Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. I will uh, send the, the, the notes relative to this to Brooke and make sure the committee is included on that email. All right, uh, so I just want to give a reminder to the committee. I know that these have been um, uh, trying in anxious times and they are, as much as we try to be comfortable with ambiguity, it's quite difficult. And a lot of our constituents have reached out with us with issues and concerns, complaints. Just a reminder, when you receive questions or concerns about a school or school personnel, please direct people to contact the building principal. If people have an issue about the principal, then please um, direct them to contact Brooke. We have a communications protocol under the, on the district website, under the Families tab. And that's intended to point people in the right direction for information and problem solving. So um, that's a good reference point, point for people too. So I'm, I'm happy that constituents reach out. But it would be good to direct them uh, down the, the road that's going to uh, lead to a solution or a, a conversation that will address their issues. Um, the Neshova Regional Education Association and the School Committee negotiated in good faith to reach agreements on reopening issues. Uh, those um, were concluded last Thursday, um, um, September third. The memorandum of agreement is pending ratification from both the union and the school committee, and I believe the union has to ratify first, and then it will come to us. And I will make the committee aware of when that happens. Excuse me, we may have to have a pop-up meeting, um, but I will keep you posted on that. And finally, I just want uh, people to know that this is the first regular meeting of the new school year. The last regular meeting of the old school year was June seventeenth. Between June seventeenth and today, we have met six times as a school committee. And add to that the meetings you have attended as members of school, of the school reopening task forces. And let's not forget the work you all did to support the passage of the feasibility study for the high school building project. I just need to thank you so much, and I'm sure Brooke and her team and the communities, thank you for going above and beyond the expectations that are set out for this volunteer job. Your efforts are greatly appreciated. So thanks. Finally, if there are no objections, I would like to table the item Updating School Committee Protocols, which is under Old Business, to um, a subsequent meeting. Given the, 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 the areas we need to cover tonight, I think we can move that so we can focus on the other agenda items having to do with uh, the reopening and some other items. So if there are no objections, I will move that to a subsequent. Seeing no objections, then we will move on. Okay, Brooke, I'm going to turn it over to you. Um, just a reminder to folks that while I, I want folks to be able to ask questions, um, I will attempt at points if we uh, get mired a little bit, to move the conversation along. So um, just um, you know, what we need to do. Okay. Brooke, you're up.
Great, thanks. Thank you so much. I also want to um, echo Cathy's um, appreciation. And you know, I, I think, uh, you, you know, you mentioned about the MOU, um, tonight, the MOA, MOU. That was probably one of the most intense negotiation periods because we really um, got down to business quickly. Um, I, I, I think in the first six days, I think our team had put in um, at least twenty-five to thirty hours uh, of time inside of six days, and that was over with the weekend. Uh, we met often, sometimes we met every day, sometimes we even met twice in one day. Um, a lot, a lot of effort went in. That was just the six days that I was involved. And then um, I know Elaine, you were involved, Cathy, you were involved. I know Rob and Lisa made guest appearances, and Marie was there from the beginning. Joan DeAngelis was there from the beginning, Steve Cullinan sat in for the first six days. And there were a lot of people. Todd made a guest appearance at one time one Saturday morning. I mean, uh, you know, it was just, it was a lot. And I'm so grateful that um, everybody offered so much of themselves and so much of their time and expertise to uh, to get us to the point that we're at tonight, which um, says a lot, I think, for our district, and a lot for our union, a lot for our relationships. Um, not all districts are at this point in time, so I'm very, very grateful. So thank you for the leadership that so many of you showed uh, throughout the, the process. Just really, really appreciate it. Um, I also want to thank too, I know that several of you have sat on various task forces with us or steering committees, or any other committees all summer long. Um, I, I know that the administrative team has been uh, working since March thirteenth without stop. And uh, you know, I think i- it feels good to be closing in on the first day when students will actually come back. I think it would also be foolhardy not to uh, put out there the fact that this is uh, this is polarized. This is, this for some reason has become politicized. And I think sometimes that people forget that we are still in, in a pandemic. And, and I think sometimes that, that gets lost in everything, because we're trying so hard. I, I speak for myself, trying so hard to make things more normal wherever we can. And so I think sometimes by doing that, we tend to forget that, wait a minute, there's over a hundred and ninety thousand lives lost. The, the number of COVID cases still across our country uh, is rampant. It's just, it's a scary place for some of us to be. I was thinking about the emotions that are running high within our buildings and within our communities. And I think there's, there's still fear out there, fear of the unknown, fear of like, when will this end? Like, when will we get back to some sense of normal? And um, so these, these are tough times. I want to echo Cathy's comments on that too. These are tough, tough times for us to navigate as we try to bring some sort of normal back into our lives. I feel, I feel really good about the pathways that we've taken right now with the, the middle school and elementary being hybrid um, and the, the high school being remote. I don't in any way, shape or form think that um, we made the wrong decision on any of that. I think it was absolutely the right decision, and I see it playing out exactly how we thought it expected it to play out. We are seeing uh, some, some of our areas um, making pivotal changes. Um, you know, thought they were going to go down one road and um, within the last couple of days, within the last week or so, we're seeing some, some definite pivots. And where they thought they might go hybrid, they're going for remote, or they, where they thought they might be able to do something else, they can't. And um, so there's, there are a lot of changes, and there are a lot of mitigating factors around that. And I know when Lisa and, and uh, talks tonight, we're going to talk about some of that because of course, one of the things that keeps coming up, well, what, what are those, those touchstone moments when you know that you, you'll have to change or pivot or do something different? And there's, there's not a real sense of um, this is clear cut. This is exactly, if we check at this and check this and check this, then we know that we're going to go here or we're going to go there. It just isn't that clean. And so we'll, we'll touch base on that uh, when Lisa talks um, a- as well. For us, I also want to send out a special thank you to all of our parents who were so actively involved with Elsa all summer long. And so many of our parents sat in on more than one committee, and I'm so grateful for that. So appreciative of people who sat on multiple task forces or uh, steering, the steering committee or what have you. Those committees met frequently. I know Cathy, you also sat on the high school committee, task force committee um, as well. So I, I'm very grateful to everybody who played an active role this summer uh, from, from our community uh, membership. So we, we sent out a special thank you to all of our parents and all of our volunteers. Uh, we're going to get into our reopening and just uh, tonight, the, the point was, I think the, from our lens was just to kind of bring it up to date and say, okay, here's where we are tonight. This is kind of where we see things moving forward. But I say again, we all know that things could happen and we could still have to pivot. This is where, this is where we see ourselves heading tonight. That doesn't mean though, that there won't be times that we'll have to pivot or change course in the next two weeks, three weeks, five weeks, you know, who knows, seven weeks, two months, the, hard to say. But we have to live with the ambiguity. We have to be nimble. We have to be ready to pivot, and, and we know that. I'm going to talk just a few minutes about the uh, first day, and Todd, I'm going to ask you to just weigh in on some of the professional opportunities that were available on the first day. I'll just start it off, and then if you can just kind of finish a little bit of the thinking on the first day. We alluded to this uh, a little bit earlier uh, at the last meeting and saying, you know, the, the theme of the day, how we were, we were trying to really build around the SEL, build around Mark Brackett's work. And because we're still continuing on uh, with the, the district improvement plan as our guiding force right now. That's kind of our guiding star, in spite of everything, that's still where we're headed. And so we're, we're not losing track of that. We tried very hard to have the first day be as normal, a, a first day for us as we could as a district. So we, you know, Alita, as always, organizes all of the longevity awards. It's just that we didn't give them out um, in person this year. They were given out um, at the school-based level as opposed to the uh, uh, the big grouping that we always have on our first day back in the auditorium at high school. Um, we recognize those people who retain professional status. Um, we, I know that Todd did a broad overview of the day, of the year. Um, and so those were kind of, and then of course, I, I gave my address. And then we broke, uh, broke up thereafter. We want to say a special thanks to Tom Hool and his group, who made sure that we had grab-a-go bags for breakfast and for lunch as well. Uh, Todd just touched base quickly about the professional development that happened on that day and um, how that led to the next ten days, if you can, just quickly, just a quick review.
Yeah, and I know I, I addressed specifically last week. So like you said, um, that's how the first day played out after our opening sessions. We certainly broke back into um, building-level meetings where Lisa and her team went around to all buildings and did the safety and wellness of staff and students presentations. We've built in a lot of SEL educator self-care breaks and given them a variety of strategies to work with on that during these um, these unprecedented times. Uh, we then offered some social, emotional and collective and self-care PD for our social, emotional learning focus. And then we provided team grade level individual preparation and collaboration time, which we build into every day over the ten days. And then each day, um, each building principal and the leadership team are doing a positive closing activity with all of their staff so they can come together at the end of the day uh, for closure before they begin the next day. Um, the next nine days after that consisted of a, a variety of different professional development opportunities, breaking up into our curriculum areas. Lexia training for our literacy programs K through five. Uh, we provided a lot of STEM training, a lot of technology training and webinars, um, and a lot of social, emotional learning um, activities um, as well for folks. To just give kind of an outline of, you know, say, what today looked like. Um, today, we, each building started off in opening morning meeting. Um, we did best practices and strategies for asynchronous and remote learning, as well as synchronous learning for both remote and hybrid learning. We did some trauma-informed social, emotional learning in connection to equity, um, followed by educator self-care breaks. We then did, our principals have done each day, building-designed activities that relate to the community at large in each of their individual buildings. Each day from twelve-thirty to two-fifteen, we've done team grade level individual preparation and collaboration. And then during that time, teaching and learning in our um, technology integration specialists have provided uh, available tutorials and also, also office hours to work one-on-one with teachers, followed by today's positive closing for um, each building at the end of each day. So it's been a, a very, very varied and differentiated ten days of PD. Um, we've tried to hit, you know, all of the teachers, all of the support staff, our extended learning staff, our, even Tom. our, even Tom Hool and his food preparation staff, as well as build in a lot of self-directed teacher time because they certainly feel the need to get ready and up and running for students to begin next week.
So it's been very structured, but structured also in a way that's allowed some latitude and freedom for our teachers to be able to do what they need to do as they prepare. There's also been a lot of choice that's been given too. So I think all the way around, I think we feel very, very good about these ten days and they're very happy with the, with the outcome and hats off to Todd and his team. Amy, did you have a question?
I was just going to call on Amy. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you Kathy for recognizing me. Yes, Brooke, I, I do have a question because I have to admit, when I saw this item on the agenda, I thought it was going to be in regard to the first day for students. Because, do you have any update on those plans? Because it is a Wednesday, which is an all-remote day.
Yeah, that, that will be, there will be more specificity brought from the individual schools with regards to that first day back because it's going to vary marginally from school to school. So that, that level of specificity won't come out of central office. It will come from the site basis though.
When do you expect that information to be forthcoming?
I would say Todd, probably that later this week to into the weekend is what I would suspect. Todd, is that your thinking as well?
We have a scheduled building principal meeting tomorrow afternoon, which is that certainly on the agenda to get that schedule out to folks.
There you go.
And if I could just interject and please excuse me. I'm, my grandchildren in Lemonstern and Medway. And just going by what I see happening there, what our timelines, I, I think are even a little bit better. There's more ambiguity with what they seem to be dealing with than we do with. But if anybody thinks that we're lagging behind, we're not. And just a reminder that this is all new territory and the information will be out there as soon as, as possible. And, but going back to my original point, people should be calling the buildings if they have questions about the curriculum and the plans for the building. Other questions at this point for Brooke or Todd? Okay.
Thanks. We're going to go to facilities and Rob's here. And we can just do a really quick update and let you know where the facilities are at. Rob, do you want to start? And I'm happy to chime in too.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Finishing up, you know, the last of the preparation for when the students return next Thursday. Facilities teams were working very hard this summer, you know, just trying to get everything in place, especially the last two or three weeks, you know, when the teachers have come back in and, you know, started to prepare their rooms, you know, for the children to return in the remote, you know, the remote setting. You don't truly understand how much stuff is in a room till you actually have to take it out. You know, this, we've got shipping containers all over the district that are pretty much full at this point. Where actually, we've had to order more because the amount of desks and chairs and, you know, other items that need to be taken out of the classrooms. It's just, it's amazing how much stuff is, you know, in these classrooms that, you know, the students use on a daily basis. So we're just trying to finish that stuff up right now. The gyms are, you know, full, the cafeteria is a full. So, you know, the guys are working feverishly to try to get through those things right now. We've got a good plan in place as far as our cleaning and disinfecting practices. You know, we've got a good disinfectant that we're using is, it's a green, green seal certified disinfectant. It's labeled for, it has a COVID kill claim on it. The dwell time for the material is five minutes, which means the disinfectant has to sit on the surface for five minutes in order to be effective for COVID. It's very safe. Like I said, it's got a green, you know, green seal EPA approval on it, which, you know, we thought would be the best product. You know, using it in the cafeterias, you know, in between lunches, you know, it's, it's food safe. So that way, you know, when kids come in for, you know, in between the lunches, we're clean. And then when the next set of kids come in to eat, you know, the desktops or the tabletops are, you know, clean and there's no issues with contamination from the disinfectant onto the food. We've worked with BLW engineer, engineering firm out of Littleton. They came in and did HVAC system evaluation for us. They've gone through all of the equipment along with the building plans that we have. And they've come up with recommendations in all of our buildings. They, they have two tier of, there's two different tiers of, you know, suggestions that they've come up with. You know, ranges from coming up with a building epidemic mode for our building management system, where we're going to be running the HVAC equipment two hours pre-occupancy and two, two hours pre-occupancy and two hours post-occupancy, which would be two hours past when the second shift custodial staff leaves. So that way, all the air handling equipment is running while they're doing the disinfecting. So that way, you know, we've got the freshest air in the building once, once the kids come back, the kids and the staff the next day. Most of the equipment, it's based on the design, does deliver the amount of fresh air or the CFM that, you know, is required. You know, we can, right now, it's, it's favorable because we can open the outside air dampers to a hundred percent. You know, a lot of the talk is the air exchange rates per hour. And, you know, you want to have a minimum of four. Right now, we can achieve up to, you know, five to eight based off of the outside air, outside air dampers being open at a hundred percent. So we are able to flood these buildings with fresh air that, you know, is adequate for the, for the hybrid model and also obviously the, you know, at the high school with, with no students being in there. There are some things that they recommended. Some of the, some of the equipment didn't line up with the building plans that we've had. So they've asked that we bring in a balancing, a balancing company or a commissioning agency to come in just to test the equipment. But they've, they've stated in the, in the reports that, you know, based off the age of the equipment, they've, they feel pretty comfortable that it meets all the, you know, the standard codes, you know, for, for the CFM we need to bring into the buildings. Most of the, most of the data in this, you know, it's, there's a lot of information, you know, that we have to go through, especially with creating the epidemic mode in the building management system. You know, opening and closing the air dampers, you know, to get them to a hundred percent. There's no global, what they call a global set point where you can go into the building management system and just hit a button and set it at a hundred percent, seventy-five percent, fifty percent, whatever value you're trying to achieve. You actually physically have to go into every single piece of equipment to change that air damper value. And we went through the whole system and it took about two hours to go through the entire district's HVAC system to, you know, adjust those dampers. So it's, it's a lengthy process. So, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be a balancing act. You know, if it's seventy-five degrees out with low humidity, you know, we can keep it at a hundred percent with no issues. You know, you get a day where it's, you know, eighty-five and it's humid, you know, you're not going to want to run those air dampers open at a hundred percent because it's going to create, you know, an uncomfortable, you know, uncomfortable situation, not situation, but uncomfortable conditions inside the, inside the rooms. And the same thing on the, in the wintertime and the heating season, you're not going to be able to run those outside air dampers at a hundred percent because you're, you possibly freeze coils and stuff like that. All the equipment, those values are based off of worst-case scenarios. So like in the wintertime when it's fifteen degrees out and those air dampers are at ten percent open, you're still achieving the floor ACH, the air exchange per hours, air exchange per hour. So those values, you know, we should be able to achieve that, you know, even a worst-case scenario. So I feel pretty confident, you know, we're finding that mostly the equipment is, you know, it's running good. You know, but the longer the equipment runs, you know, the harder it's working. You know, we're just going to have to stay on top of, you know, making sure that everything's where it needs to be.
Amy, do you have a question?
I do. I can wait until, are you, Rob's done? Are you done?
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, my question is, two things. Would you be able to talk a little bit about the indoor air quality devices that are used in each classroom? I have a visitor right now, sorry. And the second thing was regarding the tier one recommendations that were included in each report. But I can get back to that after you have, you talk about the indoor air quality devices.
We've, we've purchased six or seven of these units that each of the, you know, each of the schools is going to have one. It monitors your CO2 levels. It monitors formaldehyde levels. It monitors particulate matter. And there's one other thing that it monitors. So what we can do is go into each room. First, you're going to bring it outside and calibrate it, you know, to zero it out. And then you can go into a space and it will give you your, you know, CO2 levels. You know, we're trying to achieve six hundred parts per million on the CO2 with not to exceed eight hundred. So what we'll do is, you know, we'll get a baseline with the room that, you know, empty. And then once the room is occupied with the teacher and the students, we'll go in and get another, you know, another reading, you know, to see where those levels are. You know, with the outside air dampers open at a hundred percent, you know, we should be able to, you know, achieve that in between six and eight hundred parts per million. You know, if we're seeing higher rates, then, you know, obviously we're going to have to open windows and things like that. So this is one of the tools that we're going to be using. We've also ordered velocity meters. That way we can, you know, monitor the HVAC equipment, you know, make sure that we've got, you know, sufficient airflow coming out of the vents and things like that. As far as the tier one recommendations, you know, they, there's quite a few of them. I think it's pretty much, it goes up about thirty per building. You know, and it just, it goes through, you know, the different type of equipment that we have, whether it's an air handling unit, a unit vent, you know, rooftop unit, and just gives recommendations based off of those. You know, a lot of talk, you know, through this, you know, through the summertime and, you know, even working with the union is, you know, the MERV thirteen filters. And putting MERV thirteen filters in is, you know, they, the equipment, you're going to reduce the CFM coming into the building or into any given space if we're putting MERV thirteen. They're just, they're too, they're too restrictive. And that, you know, that's outlined in a lot of the tier one recommendations that, you know, although MERV thirteen filters would be best, we would be losing the CFM to, you know, to achieve that twenty CFM, you know, per occupant. You know, we could be down at five, seven or ten, you know, depending on the piece of equipment. So, you know, there's other recommendations in there that if you have rooms, interior rooms with no windows, you know, then we, you know, we get the HEPA filters, the portable HEPA, HEPA purification units, which, you know, we're getting account of all those interior rooms that way. You know, once the, the heating season starts and we have to close the outside air dampers down, that we'll have HEPA purification units for all those interior rooms that don't have windows.
Thank you. Other questions for Leah? On you.
Thanks so much, Rob. What an unbelievably difficult task you're dealing with. I can't even imagine. So I guess my only question is, when will the reports be released to everyone?
I sent them off to Brooke just before the meeting started, actually. So she has them. And then we'll get them up on the facilities webpage. So that way, everybody, you know, has access to them.
Like to clarify, Amy said, talked about these tier one recommendations. I'm assuming that means this would be like the top of the line things we could do to make our buildings absolutely perfect? As opposed to maybe a tier three recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, there's not, there's, there's nothing perfect. There's, it's never going to be perfect. You know, we're dealing with some older equipment, even some of the new equipment. Like even, you know, you can't, you can't use the MERV thirteen filters. There's, you know, none of these buildings were built for, you know, a pandemic, unfortunately. You know, maybe in six years when we, you know, hopefully have a new high school, that'll, you know, factor in. You know, air quality, I would imagine will be pretty good at that point, you know, based off of some of the equipment they'll be able to put in. But these are short-term solutions to, you know, set us up in the best, best-case scenario that we can do. You know, the air purification and the HEPA air purification units, you know, and bringing in the, the commissioning agent to make sure that, you know, we can, you know, get the systems running optimal with some of the, you know, the units that they didn't have all the information for. But you, when you read through the recommendations, say, you know, most things are, you know, we should be in pretty good shape and we'll be able to, you know, provide the most amount of fresh air into the buildings.
So excuse me, didn't I send everybody the reports this week?
I think we got them today, Kathy. It might have been late yesterday, but there were six of them. So I haven't.
No, no, I sent them up. But then we get them first and then they get published. And I know the teachers association wanted them, so Brooke sent them to them, but they're going to be posted, correct, Brooke?
Right. And there's actually some newer ones that just had some, I think some typo changes, right, Rob? If memory serves me right. So I'm going to resend them to, that's why he was saying that he sent some new ones to me tonight. I'll send those out. Those will go to the teachers union.
Very good.
Posted tomorrow.
Thank you. Any more questions for Rob?
Rob, you've been amazing. Thank you so much. This has just been quite the summer and I just, I agree with Leah. I think you've just done incredible work for us all summer long, day, night, weekends. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. Appreciate everything you do and your patience with trying to explain mechanical engineering to a person like myself who is not a math or a science or a, I don't even know what I am anymore, just old. But thank you. If I get it, anybody can get it.
We're all learning together. We're all in this together.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, health and wellness, Brooke?
Yeah, so the next piece, I'm going to turn over to Lisa and Lisa's just going to go through, again, a quick update from her lens and then I'm going to chime in as well. So Lisa, do you want to get started?
Perfect. So on day one, we, I did a train the training with our nursing staff for about four hours. As you can imagine, the guidelines continue to change as the pandemic changed throughout the entire summer where they had most of it off. Did engage on meetings with me on several occasions, but wanted to make sure that we're all up to date on the right guidelines. We then conducted trainings in each building for the entire staff. That took about an hour and a half. Certain things we talked about is sticking with the basics, what is COVID, how was it spread, mitigation factors, protocols that we have for symptoms that happen within the building, travel orders, daily screenings on that should be conducted by staff and students. Talked about isolation rooms and what that looks like and when to send students down to the nurse. We're making most of our guidelines of nurse will go to the student when possible to keep the flow of traffic in the hallways. We also talked about PPE mask use, et cetera. We had, we did a second training with select staff that would need full PPE for whether it be toileting or for those students unable to wear a mask and then be within close contact, whether it be PT, OT, speech, or some type of behavioral restraint that may have to happen. So those, we're almost done all of them. PPE will be provided, full PPE will be provided for all of them. And that was another hour to an hour and a half training based on the needs of staff. Very well we said, received by all, happy to say. We are also, obviously was part of the steering committees. I sat on with Luther Burbank last evening and will sit with Center School tomorrow evening for parents that have specific questions to help answer those.
Lisa, can I just chime in? So I just want to go back to the parent forums. There was a parent forum that she's speaking of now at Luther Burbank last night. Tomorrow night, as she just said, is Center School. And Monday night is both more Sawyer and MRE. So I just want to put that out there.
Perfect. And we are fit testing tomorrow along with facilities as well. We have an outside agency that is coming in to do fit testing for N ninety-five masks for our nursing staff and/or facilities in case of isolation room cleaning that needs to happen. Can honestly say, Rob has been very patient with me all summer with getting those isolation rooms up and running and really facilitating air purifications in there as well as having the walls, windows and doors, hand washing stations and et cetera. Really happy about that, of the development of isolation rooms that are required. We continue to meet with the nurses on a weekly basis to filter out questions. I should say, I say weekly, but it seems like daily right now to answer all of these questions that are coming out. Also went around and met with those teachers that have special healthcare needs students and really looked at their space to help organize and make a safe environment within their own individual spaces. So I think that's like a lot of it in a nutshell.
Can I just pop into just quickly? I know that Rob said, I had alluded about that the, the high school won't have, you know, full hybrid students in there, but there will be about 100 sped students that will be in that building. So these trainings are critical to make sure that our staff are prepared for what's coming their way. As well, of course, throughout the district, but the, but the high school certainly has a, a large number of students who'll be in that building.
Yeah. And we're doing the PPE training over there tomorrow at 10:00. So it'll be finished up tomorrow. And I think that will then be the entire district. Happy Penn training was obviously, that's part of our annual mandated trainings as well. And that is being, has been going on this week as well. All nurses were CPR trained the other day and then do a mandatory trainings on head concussions and 51A annually. Will be completed this week as well.
So Lisa, I just want to just go, kind of go back to some of the things that we had talked about earlier today. You know, the notion of when is it going to be a point in time when you know that you can shift gears to, to change the model and implementation that you're doing right now. And, and I think I just want to point out that, of course, we were talking about the fact that there are protocols that have been set aside by DESD. Not a lot of specificity though, from our lens. And, you know, again, it's one of those things where we were told that we were going to get a lot of guidance. And then actually just a little nutshell guidance kind of came out and basically leaves it up to the local to, to make the final decision. But there are a lot of things that go into this. I mean, I know that Lisa, you're here and we're talking about, you know, the actual, maybe COVID rate, for example, in our community and/or within, within our schools. I also want to just be really clear that I think sometimes we think about COVID rate with our students, but we have to think about COVID rate within our adult population, within our staff as well. And so, you know, it, it's not necessarily like what might move you to, and I'm going to go to full remote right now rather than full return. I, I know that there's a segment of our population that, and I want to put this out there because I respect the opinions of everybody. But there, I, I think it's really important that we always keep in mind that there are people that real ends of the spectrum on this. There, there is a segment of our population that is angry because we are not going back full return with no precautions. So I want to make sure that people understand that there's a segment of our population that's very upset with us doing a hybrid or remote. So we understand that, but then when there's the other side of this that feels very strongly that we should never have considered hybrid at all, that our entire district should only be remote. So for us right now, we're kind of toggling, I think, the, the balancing point where we, where we all feel comfortable. But I don't think that there's a lot of discussion just yet about what it's going to look like for full return because the numbers are not trending that way just yet. We, we can look and say, okay, we know that, you know, COVID cases amongst our staff will, will affect what we do. COVID cases amongst our students can affect what we do, but there's some other things out there too. And, you know, when I take a look across our state right now, I see certain, certain superintendent struggling with other things too. For example, not having enough staff to man your buildings. That is a reality right now that several districts are dealing with. And that could be for any number of reasons, you know, but it could be just for people, you know, taking leaves or coming late to the game and saying, you know what, I thought I wanted to do this and now I've changed my mind. We're certainly seeing a little bit of that, not a lot of that, but we're seeing a little bit of that. You know, there are some districts that, that have not come to find their way through for an MOU. That's another thing. We're not in that position right now, but there are a lot of districts that are. And so there are a lot of mitigating factors out there that, that we have to take a look at. And, you know, I, I certainly have had folks say, well, what about the map? The map shows, you know, we're from the governor that we're white, you know, a white area there as opposed to other areas that are, say, in the red, for example. Ours is pure white. But the truth is, and I know, Lisa, we've had this conversation before too. Statistically, it won't take a lot of people in our area to, to take that area from white to red, like almost overnight. And so I really want to be clear on that, that that could happen for us. So we can't think necessarily right now in the fact that our three communities are in the white zone. So we're, we monitor that, but it's only one, one factor for us because there are all these other things that come into play as well. Another thing that's come up, and I know that we were concerned at the beginning of the student school year.
Question. Elaine?
Yeah, sorry. I was actually going to ask a question more of Lisa about that point. I know that we, we tend to think about it in terms of COVID cases and when the, whether the prevalence in our community is going up and down. But the more I think about this, the more it seems like decisions whether to return to fully in person or to, not so much to go remote, are more based on what the regulations are and if they are being tightened or loosened. Because there could be zero cases in our community, but if the CDC says you need to stay six feet apart and you need to like disinfect everything constantly, isn't it going to be really hard to suddenly bring everyone back in the buildings? I mean, we can't magically make more spaces.
Great point. I mean, I think that's what Brooke was trying to get at, that this is not, it's, you know, it's that cookie cutter puzzle that continues to evolve as we go on. As we continue to stay potentially white, we look at other data as well because we don't have, that data is only for Bolton Lancaster and Stowe residents, right? So the white, so we have other people working in our community that don't live in that community. So that's another piece, another layer that I continue to monitor. So you have an employee that lives in Worcester, for example, I'm just throwing that out there, that they're not going to show up in Bolton Lancaster and Stowe data. So that data that you're seeing, so there, there's a lot of factors that go along, which is why I continue to meet with the local board of health, our own personal local board, the National Association Boards of Health. I continue to ask the questions and also DPH twice a week, which also has medical experts on there as well as some DESI employees as well in the state Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the local boards of health. So it's, they're kind of all in that same boat together and we're continuing to work as the phase moves.
So yeah, we're going to actually ask the question that I was going to tack on at the end, which was in your professional experience, and I don't know if there's anything in your history that you can compare this to, like, how often does someone like the CDC or even the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, like, change regulations like that? Do you think that things could change incrementally or like they're going to wait until this thing has sort of played itself out somehow? And then like release all of them?
That's a hard one to answer because we've never really been through this, right? I know I haven't been through a pandemic. However, what we've seen throughout the summer is as they've learned more about the pandemic, things have changed in the direction that we need to, which is why we flatten the curve in Massachusetts, right? We've learned by putting the mask on, it did flatten us up a little bit and things like that. So we, we have made changes, which is why we remain in phase three right now. We're not moving forward yet. We were supposed to be in phase four by now. And we're not there yet because we realized that we're going to start seeing those spikes going up and we did a little bit. And some nervousness about that, so we're staying there. It's really hard to predict what's going to happen with all the schools open up. You know, we're, we're keeping all the mitigation factors there that need to happen. The reason why we flattened the curb, we stayed six feet apart, we wore a mask, we had hand hygiene that was increased. We stayed home when we're sick and were washing surfaces constantly. I mean, if we, if we maintain that, I'm feeling pretty confident that we can, you know, keep, keep that line flattened. There's no guarantee because when people leave the schools, we don't know what happens outside of the school.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Lisa? And then I'll get back to Brooke. Any questions at this point, Amy? And then Leah?
I think I'll defer to Leah.
Always a wise decision.
I think I know what she's going to ask and if she doesn't, then maybe she can defer back to me.
Yes. So Amy, Elaine and I, we met, our policy subcommittee met earlier. And although we'll do a share out later on other things, this is particular to Lisa. So Lisa, you consulted our committee a couple of weeks ago when we made our mask policy. And at that time, the CDC was pretty clear that masks with valves are not effective and should be not allowed. And so that's in our policy. There's now continued kind of confusion around the effectiveness of gators, which are like those E-mask covers and bandanas. So can you give us any updates on, in whether or not our subcommittee should amend the mask policy and add those to the do not want list?
Great question. I've asked it twice over the past two weeks to make sure that it's not changing, right? Based on some districts have decided to ban them and others have not. And their response was it's still part of the order of the governor that they are acceptable uses of face coverings at this time.
Even bandanas?
Correct. I asked specifically on both and it's still part of the order that they are acceptable face coverings at this time. When I say at this time, that does not mean that it won't change because originally we obviously know that those escalation valves have been purchased by many people and then the CDC said they're not effective. They're not saying that they're not effective at this point. It is considered a face covering via the governor's order. And I asked that specifically two weeks in a row. So since the subcommittee policy, I asked the following week to make sure that there was no change in that. I continue to ask a lot of questions on a weekly basis based on what our principals and/or other staff members have asked me to ask. And they always get back to me and if they don't know the answer, they seek medical consultants. I then asked at the following week and still acceptable at this point.
So a quick follow-up, Madam Chairwoman?
I will be.
So I, we spent some time in our subcommittee meeting looking at the comprehensive plan, which actually has very, very detailed guidance around kind of personal behavior. And so personally, when we, when that thing was released, I scrolled all the way down to the page that talked about like cohorts and teaching and learning stuff. And I went past a lot of the health-based policies. But that document is super specific and there are all kinds of hyperlinks in it that give parents a lot of guidance on what kinds of masks are the most effective. And I would ask parents to give their children masks that follow the guidelines that are in that directive because it's about how tight the mask is to the kid's face. It has to be multiple, multiple layers of material. Because whatever the kid is wearing, whatever the staff member is wearing, that's protecting other people. So I would direct people back to that document. That said, that document does say that gators and bandanas are at that time not acceptable. But our official policy at this moment is that we are allowing them, although the CDC has said that it is not clear yet if they are effective. So that's murky.
Question. So you're saying there are two conflicting pieces of information?
Well, I think that our school committee policy now supersedes what was in the comprehensive plan because the comprehensive plan said at this time, and now the policy has been passed and is on the website, MASC website in the manual. So at this time, gators and bandanas are still being allowed because the CDC has not directed us to outlaw them. But there is some skepticism even within the CDC as to whether or not they're effective. And so we continue to monitor that. And if something were to change, we'll update parents immediately.
Right. But you just cited some study or document that gave parents information about the efficacy of certain face coverings?
So it was our comprehensive plan that Brooke submitted to DESI.
Okay. So there's guidance in that, correct?
And so like putting aside that, like one piece of information that is contradictory, that the comprehensive plan has tons of information that a few constituents were looking for on how we should manage mask breaks, how to put masks on and off, how to store masks, what kinds of masks we should get. There's tons of detail in there.
So what if there were an FAQ on the website relative to this subject, since people are interested in it? Just throwing it out there, because it's, yeah, it's, and we know how cool it looks to have a bandana or a gator. Much cooler than whatever. So any other questions for Lisa? Amy?
Can I just follow up to that? I think the FAQ on the website is a great idea. I'm just, I think we need to parse out who would own that?
It's owned by central office, not the school committee.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions? Brooke, did you have anything? Oh, I'm sorry, Sharon?
I think I might too.
All right.
Is some of this, I'm going to, I'm thinking that some of this information is in the, the paperwork and the forums that are coming out from the school. Because I, I think that at the Luther Burbank forum last night, Laura alluded to all of these different protocols and procedures and, and where you can find them on the Burbank site, or I, I don't remember specifically where, but I know that she was alluding to where you can find all of this information. So maybe if people can hold on for a couple of days. I know Luther Burbank, we were lucky, we got it first. So we know other people are still waiting. But if people can kind of hold on for a couple more days, then maybe that information will be forthcoming without a lot of extra work.
Thank you. Mike, did you have your hand up? Yes, Mike?
I did. I, I feel like every time there's a presenter, I, I feel compelled to thank them because I'm realizing how instrumental that role is to making whatever plan we implement work. So Lisa, thank you for everything you're doing. And I realize how pivotal of a role this is that you have in the opening of our schools. I want to just go back briefly to something that Brooke alluded to. I think it's becoming more and more clear to me that there are multiple layers that would either allow or prevent a change from one model to another. And, but going back to the data, and this is, this is something that you and I had an exchange over last week, I believe. I know that we are collecting data about our, our students and our staff. And you are exchanging information with local board of health. Is that something that can be accessible or shared with the community? So that they have a sense of where we are in terms of these, you know, what feels like these inevitable positive cases? Or even, even a continuity of negative cases? Is there something that parents can access so that they, they can kind of be a part of the, you know, figuratively, part of the conversation, part of sort of the, the, the process that evaluates sort of the health of our district?
I, I guess, that's information at central office if they would want that to go out. I don't know where I would even start with that as far as, you know, I guess I'm thinking like, are we putting out? Because not everything's COVID, right? It's a flu, asthma, allergy season, and they all have very similar symptoms to say, we send out a report and say, 150 kids, which is normal sometimes for our entire district to say that they've had flu-like symptoms or even then suggest it's COVID-like symptoms. I'm, I'm afraid that the panic would set in a little bit when we don't know that it is that. As opposed to the next two weeks, we've had no COVID cases. We've had zero. Is that something that we, we discuss here at school committee? And that's how information is shared. I, I guess I'm, I'm going to look to Brooke for some guidance on this one, I guess. Because we, we did set up a new system in our electronic documentation. Nurses have just learnt how to use that in a different capacity for, for reporting and data. Again, there, you know, it is probably not, it, data is only as good as the information we've received. So we have students that may be home remotely that may just call in and say, which happens quite often. A parent may call and just say, kid's sick, he's not coming in. We don't know why they're sick. We don't know symptoms. We don't know. So the data is only good as the information we receive, that's in front of us. With remote, especially at the high school, that's going to be a little bit of a challenge, I think. We're asking and educating parents or will be to be a little bit more specific when they call in. The parent has the right to say, my kid's just sick, he's not coming in today. We can't, you know, force them to share that information. It's private of why they're out. We will do some balance on that to see if we feel like there's a need to do further follow-up with students or staff. I guess, I'm not quite sure I'm answering your question. Um, I guess I'm not quite sure I'm answering your question fully, Mike, and I apologize.
I think you are. I think.
Okay.
My, I, I guess what I'm getting at is that, you know, when we think of these data sets, there's, there's, obviously there's nationwide data sets, there's statewide, there's there's, there's townwide data sets, but that, those data sets aren't really disaggregated. So if we think of our, our district as just another smaller community within a community, is there a way where we can parse out the, the town data and say specifically, not, obviously not names, I mean, that's, that's clearly. But, you know, in terms of number of tests, positives, negatives, so that we can look at the town data and say, within that data set is yet another data set that we can kind of look with a critical eye.
But I, I think Lisa's point is well taken. Uh, we won't know everything, Mike. And so we're just not going to. Yeah.
Right. So, okay. So there's not even, there's not a part of that that can be even, clearly there's never a sort of an end to, you know, a data set, but there's um, just to be clear, there's not something that, that, that can be, that, that can or will be shared out with um.
Well, I think there, there, what's out there is a, already, I mean, you've got um, you know, the individual communities. Um, I, if memory serves me rightly, Lisa, like we can look up to see where we're at with Lancaster, where we're at with Bolton, with Stowe, with what's being reported. So I think that we just want to be cautious and we put that out there because it really is about what has been reported. And that, that's part of the issue, right? Right across the country, that's part of the issue is because not everything is being reported.
Amy?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Kathy. Um, this, actually, this is kind of follows up on something that Kathy brought up in prior meetings related to this about creating a dashboard, like in Neshoba. Dashboard for COVID cases that would combine the, the information being reported in Bolton, Lancaster and Stowe. I don't know if that's what you're gonna, that Mike? If like that kind of dashboard would be helpful for people to be able to track, be able to see the, the trends over time and, and be, have access to that information.
Right.
Um, in a, in a, in the grouped as a district.
Can actually disaggregate that from the state website. They report cases by town, I think, every week. But I think it sounds like what Mike was looking for, if we could get a subset of that data specific to our schools. And I, I don't think that that's um, I, I don't know that that subset exists. Um, but just to understand what, what things are going on in the towns. So you can, you can get it, but you're gonna die for it on the, on the state website. So.
But nobody is, like, nobody's from the district is doing, uh, I mean, I'm assuming somebody from the district is doing that, but is that?
I don't think we.
For about creating a dashboard or something?
Well, that was my idea, but of course I have a lot of ideas and expect other people to do the work for me. So when it doesn't, I have no one but myself to blame. But no, we can, we can, I think that what folks are interesting in is how the, the, the COVID data is trending in our towns. So, um, yeah, and I think that let's, you know, if there's a way to do it, let's see if it can get done. Um, but for right now, I think Rich has a question. If that's okay, Amy, are you good?
Yes, thank you.
Rich?
I was just gonna make the comment that um the district and the towns have a expert, a health expert from Neshoba, from Neshoba's um uh, our, our, our public health expert that looks over all the towns in the district. So they have that bird's eye view. So going along the assumption that the, the administration are experts in education and not necessarily in public health. Why wouldn't we rely on the paid expertise that each one of the towns has already at a disposal to develop criteria from a person that is trained to evaluate the data, right? I think we're kind of asking our school, you know, uh, I have a lot of confidence in our administration and, and Lisa in particular uh about um evaluating this, but she's working about, you know, making sure the school writes, making sure the school is healthy. This is a community kind of wide, wide situation. So if it was me, I would go back to Jim Garafi. And, you know, maybe this is something we can try and go away with town managers to come up with some sort of statistic because you're gonna want a public health expert with that, an epidemiologist specifically to make that recommendation. My thoughts.
And I think those are really good thoughts, Rich. Because we're educators first, we're, we're not, uh, you're absolutely right. And we work very closely and Lisa works particularly closely with the Neshoba Boards of Health, which is whom I, I think that you're thinking, uh, one of the groups that you're thinking of. Um, so yeah, that's what I thought.
Anything else, Lisa or Brooke?
Not for, not for me to help, I honestly don't.
Thank you. And I want to echo um the sentiments that my colleagues have uh expressed. Lisa, I don't know how you do it. You're like the Energizer Bunny. And you are just, you know, thank you for all the hard work that you're doing, but also um for the way in which you share information. You have the patience of a saint. And um you're very knowledgeable. We're lucky to have you here um in our district. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you. Um.
We're gonna go to Todd quickly for PD. If there's anything, Todd, dear, that you need to bring up that we haven't already mentioned. I thought you did a great job, by the way, of explaining to, like, today is a, it's a perfect example. That was a great, uh, great example.
Sure. We can, you, you know, we continue with the PD um through the beginning of next week to prepare for, you know, students arriving hybrid and or remotely. That will continue with all of those areas that I just spoke of. Um, and those same themes will continue um throughout the year. You know, a variety of our teachers are currently in a uh book read for our district book read for Mark Brackett's Permission to Feel, which I believe you all got a copy of earlier in the year, at the end of last year. We are still bent on getting him here in March, whether it be virtually or whether it be in person. Um, and that, that certainly will happen. He's just put out um another uh a series of webinars for our teachers to attend and our administration to attend as well. Um, and we're forward moving with planning our early release days, which will happen, you know, throughout, throughout the year with the same, the same focus around social emotional learning, really preparing for asynchronous and synchronous learning. Um, as well as, you know, equitable justice and racial equality. And that's another big area that we continue to focus on. And aligned with recent current events. So um, it's been very busy in the teaching and learning world and, you know, all the teachers in the buildings are tremendously engaged over these past few days. And we're just really glad to get them in, get them acclimated so they feel really comfortable to welcome students. So.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Todd?
Yeah, Rich? And then Mike?
So my question, forgive me if this is not on topic for this particular part of the presentation. I, if I missed it or if it should go later, let me know. Um, so I have a question regarding technology for the elementary schools, specifically the Chromebooks. My understanding eh from the emails that went out this week is that we don't have all the Chromebooks on hand that we need to uh provide third through fifth across the district with Chromebooks. And I guess um I bring this up because, not because uh we haven't seemed like people acquire them yet. But I think, I think there was just some ambiguity, I think in the, in the administration's uh communications. It actually, oh, it actually confused people a little bit. I know I was confused. I talked to a couple of school committees and I talked to quite a few parents that were confused about it. Um, and I guess what I was hoping to hear tonight, or just gonna specifically answer this question to the extent that you can, is are, is the district still committed to providing every student with a Chromebook to bring home to do their hybrid learning? Or am I, was I confused in my expectation that we were doing that?
So we have a section here on technology, but Todd, we can probably kill two boards with one stone if you want to deal with technology right at this point.
Happy to, happy to. So you all know, we spoke specifically about the CARES money that was available through the federal government. It made Neshoba qualify for $214,000. With that first $214,000, we went full throttle to push forward with $60,000 for purchasing 200 Chromebooks for our three through five learners. We did that very early on. Those Chromebooks came in within several weeks. We then learned that there is a global shortage of technology and Chromebooks across the globe and across this country. When the money became available through the Massachusetts grant that we quickly applied for, which made us eligible for up towards $700,000, we then went forward with another 200 Chromebooks. We got those in. We've had over 400 Chromebooks come into the district. We then put forward through another grant, another 200 Chromebooks, which are on their way. And so that being said, each of our elementary schools has equipped now 150 Chromebooks in each of their schools. We just got in another shipment, so each school will get another 64 Chromebooks to come in. And so we are just about there. Unfortunately, there is a shortage. We all know that the US mail has been slow all summer long and currently. And our technology team, when I say has been working 24/7 to make sure these Chromebooks are ready, up and running and ready to go. Um, that is the case. But in terms of putting a Chromebook in the hand of every third, fourth and fifth grader on the first day of school, that won't happen, and that won't happen for several reasons. We're focused first on getting our remote learners who will never step foot in the building, their Chromebooks first. And that will happen next week to any remote learner who needs one, three, four and five. If you're a kindergartner, first grader or second grader and do not have access to any device at home, we will certainly get you a loner device as well. That's priority number one. The next priority, students who are hybrid, who are coming into our buildings, it is a big part of our one-to-one process that we make sure kids have lessons in digital learning, digital citizenship, and proper use and care of Chromebooks that are um district-owned. So that training is gonna happen for those hybrid kids in the building so they can familiar self, familiarize themselves with the device. And that's really, really important. Um, we did it with our sixth graders. We will do it with our sixth graders again this year because they haven't had a device in their hands. Those sixth graders are gonna get their Chromebooks next week when they come into the buildings and go through the same training. And when the principal and the teachers in that building feel as though they are good and ready to bring them home, that will happen. So that is the plan. You know, we are still waiting on one final shipment of, of Chromebooks. So it's gonna be those hybrid learners that are working with those Chromebooks in the building for a week or two before we're able to then say, we're ready to take them home. Any kindergartner, first or second grader, they simply work on iPads in the buildings as well as Chromebooks. If they don't have access to one at home, we can certainly provide them a loner. So the memo that went out earlier this week was to let every family know, if you don't have access to a device whatsoever, we can get you one. But our remote learners who will not step foot in the buildings or on campus at all are the first priority so we can make sure that they are equipped. Because when those hybrid learners step foot in the buildings, they're gonna have one at their hands in their classrooms. So I hope that helps clear, clear it up. But um when I tell you that Neshoba was on top of getting Chromebooks into this district, I mean, first and foremost, there are districts across the Commonwealth who don't have any. And um, bless, bless our technology department and Succi because he certainly was on this. And I've seen those shipments come in every week and they've been working night and day to get them shipped out. All of those Chromebooks are at all three of our schools. And our ninth graders will be getting their Chromebooks on September 14th. Ninth grade in the high school has a deployment plan as well. And those ninth graders will be getting their Chromebook. So it's a minor little setback, but I can tell you that all three, fourth and fifth graders will have a Chromebook in their possession, you know, within a few weeks, beginning this fall.
Thank you.
Okay, that, that was my understanding, Todd, and I just wanted to make that clear. I was uh, it was a little bit ambiguous.
Thank you.
You know.
I understand. I totally understand. And, and we, we certainly want to just make sure that everyone K through five understands that if they don't have a device in the home and all that, we just wanted to make everybody feel like we can get you there, you know, we, we, we'll respond to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mike?
Uh, Todd, just a quick question. Um, as of now, uh, as of today, do you foresee um staff professional development being remote or in person?
Uh, that's a great question. It's been very balanced um and diversified over the, you know, last week, this week and a couple of days for next week. So I think we've done a good job providing opportunities for those who want to do it remote with webinars. But we're also building in time for those teachers who feel like they need to meet, you know, for common planning and in teams um within their schools, but doing it in a way that is socially distanced. So we've been trying to provide as many differentiated opportunities that provide comfort levels for all of our teachers. So we are providing both.
And is that the plan?
So far, yeah, so far, that's the plan forward. If, if, you know, if we are still in the models that we are in, come our first early release day, we will be on campus, but be able to provide opportunities for those who can log on and do something remotely, as well as provide opportunities for those teachers who want to meet, you know, in a socially distant setting with masks um to provide that as well.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Lisa, do you have a question? Leah?
Yes. Um, so two questions. The grade three to, third through fifth grade, they're gonna take their Chromebooks home?
They will eventually, once we have all of the Chromebooks for each and every student through third, fourth and fifth, they will eventually be able to take their Chromebooks home because we recognize three days out of the week, they will be at home. But we want to be able to train them with those first and acclimate them first when everyone will have one. And then we will be, they will be able to bring them home. The other thing we are still waiting on too is we've had to then order cases for them so that they are protected. Um, and those are two, again, the shipments are just waiting to come in. So we certainly want to be able to allow them to take them home and take them home safely.
And so do, is it expected that the third through fifth graders are gonna bring their Chromebook back and forth?
That, that would, we would like to get to that point where we, where we get them, to train them, just like with the sixth graders, they would bring them with them to school.
And so are teachers aware that the, you know, probably the third graders, for the most part, fourth graders, I imagine you're gonna grow it down, that the first couple of weeks of school, those three days, you're gonna have some gaps in like connectivity?
There may be some gaps, which is why my memo said if you're somebody and a family with no device at home, that too will be a priority, even if you're a hybrid learner, that, you know, we can get you that, that loner as well. Keep in mind, I just said, we've got 150 per school. We just added another 64 per school. So we've got a good amount that we can lend out um right, right away for those kids who don't have devices at home. And it's just, there's a lot of moving parts with remote and hybrid and a delay of one. And so we're trying to make sure that the priority are our remote kids first because they won't come in at all. And then any families who don't have access to a device at home to make sure that they do.
Thank you. Um, any other questions? All right. I don't see any. Thank you, Todd.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thanks. Bussing. Yeah, we'll go to Michelle quickly for bussing and uh hers will probably be a shorter one than some of the others. So do you wanna just do a quick update and then I can I don't jinx that when I say that, I know.
No, thanks for being with us tonight. We appreciate all you're doing. It hasn't been a typical year for scheduling buses, I'm assuming.
Not at all, not at all. Um, thank you for having me. I wanted to start by thanking the school building administration and their teams for their hard work in identifying the students who've opted for a hybrid model and those that are in need of bus transportation. It's been a moving target and it changes constantly. Um, but they've been on top of getting me any changes that have come through up until this point. And we're, I'm hoping that we've got everything uh narrowed down now. Um, I also want to thank my contacts at Deepust. They've been available for me for regular Zoom meetings, calls and emails to talk about any health and safety protocols that we've, uh, that have come up and any driver updates. So um, as of today, all schools have identified their cohorts in bussing needs. Uh, they did a great job of being mindful of bussing needs based on survey results. So I'm pleased to say that all of our bus routes from both cohorts A and B can be transported with just one run each. So we've fallen under those bus counts.
That was huge to get that. Huge.
Absolutely. Um, there are a handful of routes where we're close to the threshold, uh, but the majority fall far below. And when space allows, I'm going to be um providing a, a list of spare seats. So if we can have some spacing between when I'm assigning the seats to the students. So they're finishing, finalizing their routes right now. Uh, as they're completed, they're sending to me um assigning seats for all the students. And for those routes, like I said, whose bus count's low, I'm gonna try to put as much space in between as possible. So sometimes we have a, a bus count of 10. So I'm trying to skip a seat in between. to make sure that they're staggered with as much optimal room as possible. In the bus video that you saw, we used some sticky notes to identify the seat numbers above the windows. That was a last-minute thing, and we have magnetic seat numbers on order. So those are scheduled to be delivered by the end of the week, and those will be supplied to the bus company. And they will be outfitting the buses with numbers so that the kids can identify their seats. Middle schools are planning to be loaded and assigned seats back to front based on the routes. But elementary schools will be assigned seats based on a combination of grade levels and the stops on the route. So kindergarten, grade one students, we're still going to try to locate them at the front of the buses so that the drivers can assist them in finding their seat numbers and following any new bus protocols and making sure that they keep their masks on because they might have the most difficulty with that. We're providing the same disinfectant products to the bus yard for their drivers and staff to use on the buses. They have been trained, or they will be trained by the bus staff. The seats and touchpoints are going to be sprayed in between each run. So we're hoping that bus routes will be available towards the end of the week. We're working diligently on them, and our Deepust dispatcher, Dawn, has been working tirelessly to build the routes. And this year, they're going to be very specific to each cohort to keep the routes as condensed and direct as possible. So we're not going to be going out of our way. We're each, we're identifying each student that needs to be picked up on each day and basing the route based on those kids. And finally, I've confirmed that all of the routes will be covered by our returning drivers or spare drivers available to jump in should they need to cover a run. So we don't have any routes left uncovered at this point. But overall, the last few weeks have been a scramble, but everything seems to be falling into place quite nicely.
So, thank you. Questions for Michelle?
I lost my video, so. That's okay. Todd loses his too, an hour, 20 minutes or whatever.
So Michelle, I'm going to thank you before someone thinks of something. We will email you or through Brooke if we have any other questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, staffing, Brooke?
Anne Marie, we'll turn this to Anne Marie. A quick update.
You've been quiet.
I have been, yes, characteristically so. This time of year always is on start of the year staffing. And this year, even more so than other years, it's been busy and complicated, more so than usual. There have been more moving parts. There's staffing adjustments related to the modes of learning and to accounts of various staff leaves. So it's been, it's been crazy. Last weekend, last week and last weekend, we're very busy. It continued all this week. We have, having the principals were doing interviews even this afternoon. And actually during our meeting right now, I got a text from one of the principals who was completing some interviews. So with everyone's best efforts, we really do fully expect to be fully staffed when we start, when we start school next week. We've got, we've got several unit A positions that are either awaiting responses from the offers that we've put out or the offers went out like today, and we're waiting to hear, you know, waiting to see how they did or waiting to send out an offer like from the interviews today. So those should be all wrapped up. We've got a few instructional assistant positions at the elementary and a few at the middle school level that we're still looking to fill, but our expectation really is that we'll be fully staffed. We've got a couple of those that are awaiting responses from applicants to whom we've made offers. So the principals have been working very hard to get it done, but we do expect that we'll be, we'll be fully staffed when the day comes, when the students come. In addition to the principals working hard, and I don't like to miss an opportunity to give a shout out and a word of thanks to my Vicky and Darcy in our office. They've been, they spent the whole holiday weekend doing offer letters and reaching out to people and health insurance and doing all that sort of thing, and they really went above and beyond, and they really, they deserve a pat on the back. And there we go.
So I have a question. My question is, so I'm so glad to hear that we're on track to fill all our positions. My question has to do with the fact that 10 days prior to the start of school for students, teachers have been engaged in professional development to help them prepare for hybrid and the myriad of other things. How will these new folks be brought up to speed in the window of time that's available for them?
As they've been coming on, they've been going right in to the professional development so that they, you know, catch as much of it as they can. Some of them are going to join Lisa and me over the next couple of days with, for safety and protocol training that they might have missed. It was very early on. And then the principals have got, you know, plans in place in each building to get them up to speed on what needs to happen for each individual building.
So.
Teaching and learning department too, I mean, sorry, and I want to, Todd can correct me if I'm wrong about this, has got office hours where the people can call into them, you know, for guidance and advice on any particular instructional pieces that they, for which they might need assistance.
And they'll all have mentors, unit A, correct?
Yes, they'll have mentors.
And who are the office hours with the principals or who?
No, I think it's the teaching and learning staff.
Teaching and learning staff. Learning staff and our technology integration specialist within the, within the teaching and learning department. We've been holding office hours every day. I would also say, because I know Remote Learning Academy is next on the list, our Remote Learning Academy teachers have officially met as a group with, you know, some coordination in our teaching and learning staff. So that's underway and forward-moving as well.
Great. All right, Leah?
Anne Marie, can you just talk a little bit about the situation with our substitute pool?
Right now, we've got about 65 people in our substitute pool. The substitutes also are going to have, Lisa and I were talking about adding the new teachers into it, training on the safety protocol. There's no such thing, Leah. There's no such thing, Leah, is enough substitutes, you know, so that we're bolstering efforts. Of course, it'll be a little bit different this year because we'll have a little bit less need for substitutes at the high school with the full remote model. The principal there has got, they're doing asynchronous emergency plans to leave behind so that really it will be helpful that the substitutes who would have been split between the three levels will primarily be split between the two levels. So we think we're going to, we think we're going to make it. Yeah, no such, there's too much subsidy, and you can't pay them enough money, and you can't produce people, you know. But we're also reaching out, others should probably say to, you know, like for our, for some of our positions, particularly elementary school, Nishoba is a very desirable place to work. So we get, you know, like 174, 147 applicants for elementary school positions. So we're reaching out to the people who weren't selected to, to ask if they're, would be willing and have any interest in being substitute teachers for us. A lot of them, not enough, but a lot of them jump on that each year with the, with the knowledge that if they become a good substitute teacher, they've got a good shot the next year of taking a spot if they've, you know, if they serve as well as a substitute. They've got a leg up on a permanent position the next year, so hoping that will gain us some people as well.
Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up?
Wait, 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 wait. Anybody else have a question? You'll still get to ask your questions. Don't worry. Anybody else? Okay, Leah, go.
I just wonder, I know that you can't pay them enough, but you could probably, we could probably talk about paying them as much as the neighboring towns. I know, I understand that our, our rate is low.
They're not the lowest, but we're not the highest.
Yeah, and we actually, we raised that rate, I think it was my first year here.
That's right. $50 a day? It was crazy.
I don't know what it was.
It was very low. It was below competitive. And we didn't have high, we didn't have criteria for people to sign up to be subs. It was, unfortunately, as we say, breathing with a pulse. So we've raised the bar, thanks to Anne Marie and Brooke and the salary increase. Any more questions for Anne Marie? Okay.
Great, thank you. Go to Todd with Remote Learning Academy, if you could just do a quick touch base on Remote Learning Academy activity.
Sure. So, I mean, we know that our high school is fully remote. So our teachers at the high school are, you know, the full remote teachers working with kids and the schedule that will, that will occur at our high school, 9 through 12. I mentioned that the 14th will be Chromebook deployment day for all of our freshmen. And our high school administrative, administration, working with the technology department, have a Chromebook deployment plan for our freshmen for next week so that they'll have those before they begin work at the high school in terms of remote learning. Our K through eight remote learners will be part of our remote learning academies, which will be taking place certainly by building. We've hired several remote learning teachers who will be the teachers in each of their disciplines. They have certainly come on and joined our professional development in the last several days. They all met as a group today, and they plan to be housed together. So they've got common planning time so that they can also work together to also discuss students and work with some of the organization around that, and they'll be housed at the high school. And like we said, those remote learners are a priority to get them their devices. It's day one because they will be at home and will need, need those devices. And we'll be working with their remote learning academy teachers. I've mentioned in the past, we've certainly provided and ordered a variety of resources through the Learn platform. We have increased our Zoom capacity. So, and this ties into some of the technology too. So we met with technology today, Brooke and I did. They've tested all of the bandwidth and the increased bandwidth in the district, which has grown exponentially. We know that when everybody logs on across the nation next week.
I know.
But in terms of our bandwidth, we feel very strong that it has grown, and we have grown that. We have purchased Zoom licenses for all of our teachers in the district, and that will be coupled with Google Meet. So we have two two-way communication platforms for synchronous face-to-face learning for all students and teachers. Google has also added on what's called Envisions, which allows some more enhanced protocols for some of our two-way communication as well. And we're certainly offering professional development for our teachers with that. We've also ordered Lexia for our K through five and our literacy. Screened Castify is another very popular resource that teachers love because they're able to record their lessons and then send them out to students so that they can watch some of them prior to coming into a synchronous discussion or synchronous learning opportunity. So we certainly are getting there. Every day is something new, for sure. But we're happy that we've got our remote learning academies teachers up and running. We have our lists. Students have gotten, you know, their cohorts that they're in as well. And we'll work to get those Chromebooks out to those remote learners next week at the first start of school.
Thank you. Anything else in technology? Todd, that you want to add?
Yeah, I know I did. I mean, I'm glad we brought up the Chromebooks earlier. Thank you for, for that. And I did want to speak about the increased bandwidth, the addition of the Zoom licenses and the add-on certainly for the Google Meet component. So we feel pretty confident that all of those things are there, and those were the tech updates that Succi certainly wanted me to highlight for you folks tonight.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can I just stress too that our concern seriously is what happens in a week or two weeks' time when all schools go back across the nation? We're concerned. We're not concerned about our own local bandwidth. We are concerned about the nation.
So given that concern, what's Plan B if something goes not well?
I don't know that there is a Plan B for anybody right now because we are all so reliant on this technology to work. So I think we are all gravely, I think, I just want to put it out there, we're all gravely concerned.
Okay.
Not at the local level, though.
Leah?
I do, I do, I do think though, you know, certainly because we opted for the remote learning model at the high school, those high school teachers all have Google classrooms and can work within their Google classrooms, and we have continued professional development on that. So should there be, you know, a glitch, say, in a Google Meet or a Zoom or, you know, kids and teachers are still working within their Google classrooms, which they have done so regularly? And also with the K through eight hybrid model, that allows us to differentiate the synchronous versus asynchronous learning. So when those kids are certainly in the building, we've had a lot of discussions that we don't necessarily want kids on too many devices when they're here. You know, because we know that a lot of that is going to be happening when they're at home. So there, we have created that balance, should there be a glitch, that there will be, you know, alternatives to learning that's outside of a meeting like we're doing right now.
Thank you. Leah and then Amy.
So Todd, that kind of segues into my question, and it's nowhere really on the agenda. And so you guys can slap me back if you must, but I think it's really, no slapping. I think it's really important to address how the high school's full remote model is going to operate and how I think that there's a perception that there was a shift in the methodology that was emailed out to families the other day that kind of feels, intellectually, I can understand. It's, it's designed to make sure that kids aren't staring at a screen and zooming for six hours, five days a week. But I think that parents need some assurances that the promise of this full remote was to maximize teaching and learning time, and that email felt like they were, that it was being cut in half. And me personally, as a teacher, I wonder if it's arbitrary to go every other day thereby kind of hamstringing teachers? And why we wouldn't just say to our professionals, create a balance and then let the teachers do their work? I mean, I know that I'm not, I'm going to assign some work and then I'm going to cut the kids loose. I'm going to create breakout rooms where I can meet with very, there's lots of things that teachers can do. But parents are worried that the high school kids were sold a bill of goods that have kind of shifted and changed, you know, as a pivot.
So maybe what we can do is actually do a presentation, bring some high school folks in and do a presentation at our next school committee meeting so that there's clear, so that you can ask all the questions you'd like to at that point in time.
So, yeah, we have our questions, but again, isn't this an opportunity for teachers to, for parents to reach out to the high school to get, to get an explanation and to have more detail? I think, you know, we want to be informed, but I think if this is something that people are concerned about, they need to get in touch with Steve, and he can either give them the information or point him in the direction. When I was on the high school task force, it's, it didn't sound, it sounded like what you were describing, Leah, in terms of what you were doing, and I didn't see the communication from the high school, so I don't know. But please, encourage people to call the principal. Amy?
I just want to reiterate, I hear what you're saying about contacting the principal, but this felt more like a a different, the rollout of what was communicated to high school parents was different than what I thought we agreed to for a remote opening at the high school. That's why I think it might be more of a school committee discussion than parents.
We can do that, but I'm saying if you have immediate concerns right now, call the principal. But for us to understand if there was, this is what we thought it was going to be, and this is what it is, I think it led to Brooke's point, bring in some folks at the high school to do a presentation for us.
Without them here, I, I don't want to speak for them without them here. If they were here tonight. So I want to just be very careful to not speak for the high school or to have Steve here or his administrative team here to be able to speak with greater specificity than I think Brooke or I could right now, right now in this moment.
That, that seems totally fair, and I like the idea of having them present some more details because I had a bunch of questions about the high school reopening that are along the same line as Leah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Todd? Oh, Elaine?
Yeah, I was going to say, sort of down that road, there's been some talk about the schedule for hybrid in K to eight and the synchronous and the asynchronous. There's been nothing that I'm aware of about what the RLA schedule might look like. And if now some people are making things up in their mind about, and it's going to look the way the high school did, or it's going to look a certain way, and can you say anything about what that might actually look like?
So I can say that, that, you know, the coordination of the Remote Learning Academy has been taking place with building principals over the last week. And because we just, really just getting those remote learning academies hired and onboard, that schedule has been in process. They've met, I think, for a great portion of today together as a group and with the building principals so that they could be syncing up those hybrid schedules with the Remote Learning Academy schedules. So that is, that is forthcoming.
What, sorry, why would they be synced up with the hybrid?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Elaine.
Oh, sorry, why would their schedules be synced up with the hybrid schedules?
In other words, the In other words, the coordination of the remote learning academy, those individuals are now working with the building, the building principals, K through eight, so that they're helping them build the schedule.
Oh, sorry. I thought you meant that the student's schedule, hybrid versus the student's.
No, no, no. They're just, they're just now working together so that there's some consistency. Because remember those remote learning academies, those kids are in groups from each school. So we want the, the experiences to be somewhat similar, even though they are remote. So the building principals are helping the coordination of those remote learnings academy schedules.
So the, for example, the middle school principals have been collectively working together as a group of middle school principals, working with now the middle school remote learning academy, so that all ties in.
Other questions about remote learning academy? Okay.
Just extracurricular, just, this is really quickly, just to say that, um, I know the questions have been asked and I know I sent something out and the memo that Todd and I just recently sent out. We are really encouraging, um, some innovation in terms of extracurricular activities right across the district at all grade grouping levels. Um, so we would want you to know that that's not something that we are putting on the back burner. We feel that's, that's really important.
And as things.
That's all I'm saying.
Information about them, correct?
Pardon?
As things are developed, you'll bring those forward?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we'll, we'll roll it out and let you know what those, those things are. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Um, any other questions for Brooke or Todd or Anne Marie? Who's left? Or Pat, that's gonna have her moment in the sun very now. Okay.
I'm gonna give you a quick, um, business office update. As you know, Michelle is in my office and she's been very busy with the transportation fees. But there's a lot of other things going on in the office too. And, um, in particular grants, um, we've submitted that, um, grant that, um, Todd was talking about. It was going to cover a lot of those additional technology needs that we have. And also, um, we've reached out to the, um, our, reached out to the town administrators about, um, the funding that they've received directly to the towns. See if they, um, may have some funding that they could share with us to help cover some of these additional costs that were not budgeted. Um, we also have, um, FEMA that we can, um, reach out to. And, um, they're, they have, um, a deadline that's coming up for last year expenses that happened in the last quarter of, um, the last fiscal year. Let's see if we can try to absorb some of the costs from there as well. One of the things that FEMA will not, we found out, so today, one thing they will not cover is reopening costs. So all of those things that are specific reopening school in this type of environment, they won't cover that. But they do cover a lot of other things, things related to PPEs, um, structural, um, you know, plexiglass and things like that. So we're, we're working on that. So we've got a couple of grants that we're developing. Um, and I want to thank, um, people in technology and teaching and learning and facilities for gathering all the information that I needed for these grants. And, um, hopefully we'll be successful in getting some decent funding for this.
Pat, do you have dollar amounts, what we've received through the CARES Act and FEMA and what we have asked for?
Well, I believe, um, so far we've actually received, we, uh, approved funding, but what was it? Two hundred and forty something, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, Todd? Is that correct? The first grant that we received in regards to that.
Oh, yeah, the total?
Yeah, the, no, for your first grant that we submitted was about two hundred and forty-seven thousand, is that?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. And then the CDRF grant, which is the one that we just submitted, that's almost seven hundred thousand. It's actually six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars and that's, that's a pretty big grant. As far as like, um, CARES funding, we have to submit specific invoices and it's not like a grant like we have in, in the other circumstances, you have to submit for reimbursement. And they reimburse, um, it at different rates. So, um, that's a little bit different. We haven't received anything from FEMA off on the CARES funding from the towns yet, so.
But in terms, what reimbursement are we anticipating from CARES? Do we have a dollar amount there?
No, we don't have a dollar amount yet.
Okay. So in terms of the towns, um, I think you said you've reached out to them. I know that we, there should be some entitlement to some of the monies they receive.
Yes.
Where are we in, in conversation with them about our slice of the cheese?
Yes, I had, um, a really good conversation with Lancaster. Um, I, I reached out to, um, Bolton. And, um, Bolton, um, has a much smaller allocation than the other two communities. And they had just about, um, you know, used up what they had allotted to them. So there may be something there. Um, I was talking to Don Law the other day and he's gonna look at the numbers and see where things landed. And we may be able to get some out of there too. Um, as far as Stowe, um, they have a new town manager and I've reached out to her. Um, I'm expecting probably hear from her sometime this week. So, um, I'd have a better idea of what was going on. I did receive some correspondence, um, from Wrigley before he left. And he, um, he seemed to think that was something I needed to communicate through the fire chief or the police chief. And, um, so I'm, I'm just reaching out to the, um, manager right now. We'll talk about that. Let's see what's available.
I think general rule of thumb, if there has been money that's been made available to us, we have gone after it at every single. And, and we have sat in on more meetings than I can count this summer about grant meetings or, you know, things that are available to us, Pat. So we've done everything we can to, to capture every dollar that we can.
We can definitely.
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay. Did we lose Kathy?
Yeah, no, I was having a coffee fit and a sleeping fit and it's not for public consumption. So, um, I texted Elaine to take over, but she must be texting with somebody else besides me.
She's muted. Muted. Elaine is muted. We can't hear you.
Saying I got that right as you were sitting back down, so I must be on the play.
Glad to see the system works. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. All right. So questions for Pat? I do not see any questions for Pat. And so let's, could we go to something that might be quicker? Um, and then we'll go to calendar. How about, can you give us an update, Brooke, on the plans for the superintendent, the superintendent's?
Principal search? Yeah, let me just quickly. Which, so just a bit of a, a snapshot there, uh, with, um, NesDex. Um, the high school, as we reported, we plan to take this year, I think we've said that before, to take our time with this, to do a really good job. Uh, Steve Cullinan is, uh, is in there certainly for the year. We have hired, um, Janine Boulay, who I believe you've met now, John Kroll, um, as the new assistant principals. They're just, they're outstanding. Um, just, it has been incredible summer with them. And Matt Biggs, who was one of our initial cuts that we had made to the high school, actually found his way back in as the dean of students. So we're, we're thrilled, uh, to have him back too. So there's a really a, a group of four right now and they work together very closely with Tanya as well. So it's a really rock solid team over there right now. Um, so I feel very good that it's in a very good place right now as we go through the process here. Um, we'll be working with our betting ports team. We're looking to start with a, a process in, um, mid-October. And, uh, we'll, we'll see where it takes us from there. So that's, that's the plan at this moment in time.
Thank you, Brooke. Amy?
Yeah, I was just wondering as you were talking whether this search is, I don't know where the right way to say this, but if we are making sure that our search, um, takes into account our goals for diversity, equity and racial justice, um, when we're searching for candidates.
I think that kind of goes without saying, to be honest with you, because I mean, you, you always, there's always a disclaimer on everything, on, on all of our paperwork, there's a disclaimer on, uh, uh, everything that comes out of central office. For example, you know, everything that comes out of Anne Marie's office. And so I would just expect that we would have the same with, uh, with NesDex, who's incredibly seasoned at doing this kind of work. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm excited to start the process and, and, uh, and as excited as I am, I feel very secure and confident in the group that's in there right now. I feel that it's really solid and I'm hearing such positive things come out of, um, out of that staff right now. It, it's been a really positive start for that staff. Leah?
Leah?
Just really quick, um, I, I'm, forgive me if you said this, but the search committee, uh, will have all of the different stakeholders on it and how will you choose the people who represent each group?
Again, that, that's something that they will take care of. That's not something that the superintendent will deal, deal with. That will be the organization that does that.
Other questions for Brooke? Seeing none, the moment we have all been waiting for. Anne Marie?
Thank you. When we did this school calendar for this year, who could have ever thought that we'd be living in the world that we're living in now? Um, so when we did, it was pre-pandemic. It seems like a hundred million years ago, doesn't it? It seems like another lifetime. Um, but when we did that calendar, um, we weren't concerned really about how many days of the week that this, everybody came to school every day. So we weren't particularly concerned about how many days of a week they were on each day. And they were sort of even, you know, but not completely. But now that the, that the children, you know, I've come into, we have got some children coming on in the elementary middle on the A children on Monday, Tuesday and the B children on Thursday, Friday, you know, it, it required another look. There were ten Thursdays and Fridays of early releases, either for professional development for the staff or for parent-teacher conferences. That tips the scales a little bit so that the, the third, the B cohort children have less days in school with their teacher than the A cohort people do. Whereas before they would have been about even. But now since they're only coming on the days that happen to be hit with those early release days, either for the professional development or for the parent-teacher conferences, it goes out of whack a little bit. So the proposal that we have, uh, to, before you tonight, to try to even that out a little bit is to move the early release parent-teacher conference days from the Thursday, Friday to a Monday or Tuesday. And to move the full day parent-teacher conference day from later in the week to the early part of the week. That shifts two and a half days from, uh, let's see, from the A cohort to the B cohort, so that it, it evens, um, evens them out so that the result is that the, uh, cohort A children would be with their teacher sixty-six and a half days, um, of each year, of the, in the year. And the B cohort children would be sixty-five and a half days in the year. There's still a difference of one. Of course, we don't know what the snow gods will do to us this year, you know, so it could be that that will, you know, I remember one year, it seems like we had a snow day like every Monday. And so we don't know what will happen there, but you know, we can only do the best that we can do. So moving those days would, would help that a little bit. Um, it's been suggested by a couple of people that wrote to the school committee that, uh, that we should move the early release days and for the parent-teacher conferences to, um, Wednesdays. Because that would maximize the days that both the A cohort and the B cohort were in class. That wouldn't work, uh, that wouldn't work contractually. Our contract with the unit day has got some parameters around, um, the numbers of days in between parent-teacher conference days, um, and, and things like that, that would be dishonored if we, if we put those, if we tried to put those on Wednesdays. Also, we need to remember that, um, remember there was an overwhelming, we did the parent survey and it was, I think, seventy-six percent of the parents preferred not to have those, um, early release days, you know, in the middle of the week. So in addition to that, we would also like to move, Principal Cullinan would like to move the late start days at the high school on Mondays that we had, so they were late start Mondays. He would like to move each of those to the same week, but have an early dismissal Wednesday. So you'll see, if you saw the calendar in the packet, there was like the light purple and the dark purple. That, uh, so that reflects that the former late starts Mondays would now be early release Wednesdays. And the days that are the, the other color are the, um, the early release days for midterms and finals. Those days will likely change and, and Steve Cullinan is gonna get us those dates once he's sorted out what that looks like, so that there will be, I need to readdress those because right now, uh, they weren't certain when those midterms and finals would be. So those will need to be addressed later. And the other thing. It's not me.
Somebody lives near the airport.
I think it's Steve. Steve, are you muted?
No, but it's not me. There's no noise here.
He's got his headphones on. You can't hear.
Okay. The other thing that, that thankfully doesn't have an impact on this this year, but will be, will going forward is that there's now a state holiday, a Juneteenth Independence Day. And that the first time that's being celebrated is this year, it's going to be a state holiday. So it will need, um, it's, it falls though this year on a Saturday. In the state list of holidays, of course, um, public buildings, including schools are required to be closed on state holidays. If the holiday falls on a Sunday, places are required to be closed on the Monday. But if they fall on a Saturday, then the buildings are required to be closed on the Saturday. So just as like one piece of.
On Friday.
Otherwise would be a, um, a luckless year, it seems. Um, Juneteenth is not going to impact our calendar this year because it will fall in to be celebrated on June, uh, um, nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Right, right. So, so we have before you is an, uh, is a movement to move those early release professional, um, the early release parent-teacher conference days and, uh, the full day parent-teacher conference days from the late, later part of the week to the earlier part of the week to make that balance a little better. And make the changes in the high school late start early dismissal and the, don't worry about Juneteenth this year.
Okay. Questions for Anne Marie? Amy?
Um, I, I want to thank you because I know that there is a lot of, this is a difficult task to try to balance the days with all the constraints that face you with the contract teachers, which to be honest, I, I knew was a factor, but didn't know how it was limiting things. Um, but when I just tried to go through and count up the full days and half days for each cohort, I guess I, I didn't, I viewed it a little bit differently in terms of looking at it from the perspective of the student and the parents, um, on half days and full days that they wouldn't be in school. And so my count shows that the cohort B would have seven half days versus, um, cohort A having three half days. And cohort B would have five full days off. Actually, when I counted it up, that was the same for each cohort. Um, so when you said that the days in school were only day, different by a day, my count came out different that they were, cohort B was out a total of two days more than cohort A. I don't know how to square those. I have to trust your numbers. But when you do count up the half days that cohort B is out, just like when I looked at this, the first thing I saw was there's a lot of red.
The red days, the seven red days. That's right.
Lot of red for cohort B.
Yes.
And, um, just from a continuity point of view for the children that find themselves in cohort B, I just wonder if there's some way.
You know, you know what, Amy, I know what you're saying. I'll tell you what though, last year, I mean, they were, the, the parents were, were so strong and the staff too, when we've sent out those surveys. Um, it was, it was seventy-six percent of them wanted those, um, because it was for reasons that may not longer be applicable. You know, they're gonna go away for the weekend or, you know, or whatever it is. And who knows if they're still doing that or not. Um, and the ones who preferred the Wednesdays was but six percent.
I think that that's a really important point because when I first heard the feedback that why aren't our professional development days and half days on Wednesdays? That's exactly what I said. Well, there, we tried that, didn't go over well. People really didn't like the Wednesday half days, but then I thought, this is like, like a completely different universe we're living in now. And the challenge of balancing the days for the two cohorts. And the challenge of balancing the days for the two cohorts Chris makes the Wednesday option just completely different than the survey that was sent out.
And of course, if that's the committee's instruction, I would be more than happy to go back and look to see if, you know, if, if your, if your instruction would be for me to, um, take some of those red Fridays, you know, and turn them to, to red Wednesdays or, or I can certainly do that. Um, if that's your wish, I was sticking to the, uh, I know, uh, kind of one of my mantra has been for a lot of things, we want to try to keep the traditions and try to keep, you know, the, the way we do things, you know, as similar as possible to, to normal years with the understanding that this is anything but a normal year and anything but an imperfect year. But if that's the will of the committee, of course, it'll be my pleasure to go back and, um, and present you with another one that would reflect that, reflect that, um, and bring it to the next meeting. That would be fine.
Thank you. Mike? Mike?
Um, yeah, I just, I'd like to build off of what, um, Amy had said and Anne Marie, you brought up, uh, an important point about our contractual agreement that there would be a certain level of spacing um, for those red Fridays. I guess my question is, is that true for every one of those early release professional development days? Or is it only true for the ones that are really kind of stacked closely together? In other words, if we do go back and adjust some of those Fridays to Wednesdays, um, are we still sort of in compliance with that agreement? Or are each of those cases kind of blocked?
Yep. Well, the, the contractual's, um, limitation or, or restriction doesn't apply to the early release professional development days. It applies to the early release parent teacher conference.
Okay.
Those have got to be spaced, you know, a certain amount apart, but not too close and the next day, blah, 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 and on and on it goes. So the red Fridays could be moved without contractual problems. It would be the bright yellow.
Right.
Right.
Right. Okay. Great. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm a cohort B parent and I'm thinking my kids are home all day Wednesday. Um, I would much rather they be held in school on Friday so that we can all work. And just, you know, Wednesday is Wednesday. I think that the difference is for the staff and if you're thinking that there's no um, significant disruption for the staff to use those days as a contractual PD, then I would instruct you to do that. But I would also think because the survey that we did was so quick and straightforward last time, why not do another very quick survey to say, hey, parents, we're looking about going, we're looking at going back on Wednesday? With that, does that present any obstacles? Yes or no? You know? I don't, I don't want to make a, a half clock decision right now for two thousand parents without knowing.
Yeah, and I think you're right. The last two, um, surveys we did had very, we did one for April vacation and then we did do the evaluation early on in the year of the, the early release day calendar. And we got a good response and we were able to turn it around quickly. I think that what parents want to know as soon as possible is what's the calendar going to be? Has, may have implications for planning and childcare. So, um, what if we were, is how doable is, uh, it to get out a survey on tomorrow? And ask people to let us know by Sa- Saturday, Monday, what their pleasure is. Brooke?
If you ask me to sign out a survey, it can't be done in a hundred years. Thankfully, I have smart friends, so.
I didn't ask you. Didn't you hear me? Just ask Brooke.
Oh, okay. We, we can get, we can get, we can get a survey out very quickly to do that. If you would like to do that.
We would be absolutely.
So let me just do a quick poll of the committee to see where folks are. What we've been talking about is um, optimizing instruction for, um, cohort B, so it's on a par with that of cohort A. And to do that, the proposal is that those early release days for professional development that are currently on Friday be moved to a Wednesday. And, um, the central office has the capacity to send out a quick survey and turn it around quickly. Mike?
Yeah, just, just to be clear, Anne Marie, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if there is a one or maybe according to Amy's count, a two day differential, we wouldn't want every single one of those red Fridays shifted to Wednesdays because for the cohort A piece, there are early release days, there are vacation days. And so if we were to shift them all to Wednesday, then, then it would be out of balance the other way. Is that right? Okay. It would only be a select number of Wednesdays, one or two.
Yeah. And so maybe do the survey, if this is your, if this is your, what you're telling me to do, do the survey and then come back with a calendar that would be balanced with the A cohort, A and B and make up that balance by doing the Wednesdays, if that's the will of the parents.
Yeah. I, I, I think, I think that at first glance, when you look at all of those red Fridays, it looks like there's a massive imbalance. But really, when you take into account all those other days where there's, um, no class meeting times, it's, it's closer than it first appears. And I think it's important for, for folks to, to keep in mind.
I can do that if you wish. Absolutely.
A half day and a full day when you're teaching, I think. And when you're a kid.
Right.
So, um, can I get a quick thumbs up or thumbs down? Are we willing to, to table this until we get more data about the impact of a Wednesday? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Joseph, what do you say? Oh, Rich, I see you.
You're asking what I say? I'm, I'm, just a quick clarification and I apologize if I fell asleep at the wheel on this and Matt Ture, did, did Anne Marie state that this recommendation is coming from the calendar committee? Or is this something that she did on her own?
No. Well, we had to, uh, we don't have time to convene the whole committee. So this is like an emergency thing we did, given the fact that our school year has gone from a hundred and eighty-five days to a hundred and seventy days. And that we have hybrid, for, it's irrelevant for anybody working remotely, but for kids in cohort A and cohort B, we want there to be parity in terms of the instructional time they have with their teachers.
Well, regardless, I would, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that we, with, um, Martina Kenyon and Dr. McQuire are both on the calendar committee, you know, and they helped me work through the details as well.
Regardless of who, who put this together, my preference would be not to waste any more time on this and to simply vote on this tonight.
Okay, but it seems like how many, um, just a show of hands, uh, feeling that we should survey the parents with regard to the preference. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It looks like the majority want to poll the parents. So we will bring this back. We will have a definitive calendar to, um, look at at our next meeting, which is the twenty-third of September. Is that correct? Mary? Oh.
Who are you asking, Kathy?
I thought I asked Anne Marie. Will we have a, another?
Yes, we'll have, we'll have another calendar, but yes, that's fine.
Leah?
So knowing that our next meeting is going to be two days shy of that first half day, can parents assume that the, I think it's the twenty-fifth, will remain a half day for planning purposes, Anne Marie, in striking that balance?
Well, see, I'm not here to kick Brooke under the table, so I just quick, sent her a quick text. Did too. I just got it. Yes, you're right, because, um, Anne Marie, do you want to just mention what you just texted to me?
Sure. Um, yes, our next meeting is scheduled for, what did you say, September twenty-third, but since today, happy, happy, the, the, um, Nishoba Education Association ratified the memorandum agreement. I think there was some thought that we would, uh, the superintendent and the chair would want to call the committee together to vote on that MOA rather than waiting until our next meeting at a special meeting. And perhaps we could bring the calendar to that meeting and do two birds with, with that stone and get it done more quickly. So the parents wouldn't have planning time before September, the first red Friday.
And we just found that out during our meeting tonight. That, that word just came to us that they ratified. So we're thrilled and so we want to thank the, uh, the meeting very much for being so quick and expedient and getting that done.
Everyone, if you don't mind pulling out your calendars. And we typically meet and on Wednesdays, we do not have a meeting next Wednesday, next Wednesday, the sixteenth. Um, I've got everything crossed that this would be a short meeting. We'd have to go ratify, vote on the MOU and then vote on the new calendar that comes forward. Is, I need six people who are what, Brooke, what, what?
Uh, one of the things that, um, has, that I also need to talk about, and we can do this at that next meeting, I'd like to just a quick one, is MSBA. So if I could just add a quick MSBA bullet on there.
Okay, we'll make it, talk to you about quick. An MSBA. All right. So the sixteenth, do we want to, is six still work for folks? Does anybody want to do five or do we just want to stick with six?
Stick with six.
Okay. So can I have a motion for a special school committee meeting on September sixteenth at six o'clock?
So moved.
Second?
Second, second.
Steven, Steve, second. Okay. Those in favor, Sharon? Kathy, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Um, Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes. You're gonna blow your three minute record.
Hey, stop it. Okay, so we will meet the sixteenth at six via Zoom.
Kathy, who moved that?
I'm sorry?
Who moved that?
Um, Joseph did. Thing at six. Okay, so we are now at, oh, and you guys will do the survey and and Anne Marie, you will wordsmith it so that it's understandable what we're asking you to do. Excellent. Okay, so now it appears that we are at the subcommittee reports portion of the agenda. And I would ask Ms. Viverito to report out on policy. You have to unmute.
Sorry, um, so we, uh, met today, as I said earlier. We had, um, a good, a really good conversation. So a couple of things that we discussed today was pursuing, continuing to pursue um, a student representative to the school committee to act as a liaison between the kind of broader student body with us. Um, so that is ongoing and Maura Bailey is the person, the point person at the high school who's in charge of the student government. And so she, um, is working with us. The one, um, kind of thing that we wanted to, well, we're, we're ba- we're basically trying to draft up a job description for like the requirements that this person would possess, right? Like all of the things that this person should be. So for example, um, in that job description, we identified the importance of the student not being a freshman. Right? Because this person is supposed to have kind of the pulse of the student body and, you know, a freshman is still getting acclimated and learning a lot. So we thought any, you know, there's probably some sophomores who will be great for the position and definitely upperclassmen would be well suited. So we're drafting up that job description and, um, it's probably, um, we, we weren't totally sure where we should go with it next. If Brooke, you would rather us run it through you down to Maura? Or if Kathy wants to be a part of that, what do you guys think?
Um, I think that, um, it'd be good to, I, I think it's great to have a job description because we didn't have one before and it just sort of free, free formed its way into what it was. Um, I think the two new assistants at the high school would be incredible resources for you guys to talk to about this. They come with a breadth and depth of experience. Um, they are very into student empowerment and student voice. And so I, I think that if, um, work through, um, Brooke to work through Steve to get to John and Janine, and you just sit back and let them move all the work. Just kidding. No, they're, they're awesome.
They're awesome. They were awesome.
They have some great ideas. They brought a lot.
So, um, we kind of, we worked it out, like some of the job description is, um, regulated by law. So for example, the person has to be elected by the student body, right? Like there are a couple of things that are required by law. Couple of things that we worked up. So Brooke, I will send, I will kind of touch base with you about that.
Absolutely. That sounds great.
Awesome.
Great resource.
Um, and it's like that, um, Maura Bailey is going to be helping us with that too, um, all the way down to that advisor level. So, um, the other thing that we talked about, and this is really for Anne Marie, is we recognize that progress on the administrator handbook is slow because you're clearly busy. We're just wondering if you guys could give us an update on what training, um, the administrative team has had globally on investigative procedure and how it's been codified?
I, I, I can take that actually. I think that what we had said was that we were going to get our kids back into school first. And we remember, I believe I had mentioned to you that we had every intention of doing that at our summer retreat. And then we decided that we could not, we could not set the time aside for our summer retreat. And so we said we would do this once we got the students back in. We would then do a full retreat, probably October, November, and we would do the same things that we had planned for the summer at that point in time. Right now, our goal is to get everybody in the buildings and acclimated and settled. And then we'll look at taking that next up.
So I think hopefully for the committee to identify those policies that we cur- if we have policies currently in place that address, because what we're talking about with Anne Marie and Brooke and they were saying are really protocols and procedures. But what policies are we basing them on? And one of the great things about that MASC, uh, policy, a database is that you type in any topic and you will get policies from every district that's in there. So if I think to have those as the foundation for, for the protocols that are put together, um, would be, um, the way to go at this point. So if you guys could research that. And if we don't have one, to talk to Dorothy Presser about whether or not we should have policy around this.
Okay, this is just something that you guys remember. This came out of the independent.
It's a goal. This is the goal for the upcoming year. Yep.
Okay, so I mean, investigations could be required in September and October. So like, it's just a concern that's on our radar. I know it's on yours too, Brooke.
Like everything that has gotten pushed. Yeah, but no, it's, it's a goal. We have it as a goal for this year. And, um, so.
Okay, and so I just wanted to put it out there that, um, the policy subcommittee is also kind of taking up the mantle of, um, effectiveness of school councils and how that policy is being implemented across the district. So this is all required by law, et cetera. We have policies on it. Um, our, our current policy is not, um, in, in my opinion, our current policy, although in line with MASC policy, uh, model policy, it actually is not totally in line with the law. So, um, that's something that we're picking up a little bit. Um, so for example, uh, that policy says that the school committee should be reviewing school improvement plans. And like, there are just a couple of things around how the community can have more voice in the policymaking at their school level. And they inverse being true, how the administration can rely on those parent representatives and community representatives at the high school level, student representatives, to then, um, push information back out to the public.
Should be part of the infrastructure of school governance. And that was the intent with that reform twenty-five years ago.
And we have all these great councils and all these great administrators, people doing lots of great work. So we just want to, um, kind of envision, or rather, look at the effectiveness and maybe even, um, shoring up how they're all kind of syncing together with the district improvement plan.
And I think that's a good, uh, you know, I, I know that Brooke attends as many of our subcommittee meetings as possible. That's a, a good, um, uh, topic to work with Brooke on. And because she and I have spoken about the need to, to look at what exists and to see how they can work more effectively. Um, so yeah, but I would liaise with Brooke on that one.
Okay, and that's about it for us unless Amy and Elaine, did I miss anything?
Good job. Well, you guys have been busy. Okay. Communication, Mike?
Uh, all right, well, uh, thus far, communication subcommittee has met, uh, twice. Our first meeting was, um, hashing out roles and responsibilities. Um, and we followed that with establishing what our goals were. Um, we brainstormed for, um, Um, we brainstormed for, um, defining what effective communication means between the three primary components, the district, the school committee, and the community. Um, so we defined what effective communication looked like from our own unique perspectives. We kind of talked about how we, we come with, with different experiences and different perspectives and how that sort of enriches our ability to come to something that's a little more comprehensive. Uh, we talked about our past experiences with communication, what works well and what doesn't work. Um, and then we brainstormed ideas on how to enhance communication as we move forward, particularly in this year, which is obviously so complicated. So we are going to meet for the third time on Monday, the 14th, and we're going to pull in the superintendent to share out some of those ideas.
Right. Um, and it's important, I think, to reconnect with the communication plan and communication protocol that, that the district has. And I know that last year we spoke about evaluating the systems we have for what works, what doesn't work. And I gave you and Elaine a resource that is a, someone that Todd knows. He's connected to everybody. But if you wanted to pull in someone for consultation to give you feedback on the work that you're doing. Um, I know that the card is like as big as my head. It's, but if you don't have it, I'm sure Todd will remember who I'm talking about. So. Thank you. And thanks for getting off the dime, Mary and I, our personnel. And we will be meeting for the first time on the 16th with Brooke and setting up the rest of our, our meetings and agendas from there. So thank you, everyone. So it is 9:10. We're only 10 minutes beyond our designated end time. And it's this point where, um, we would have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Elaine?
I move to approve the consent agenda of September 9, 2020, containing the meeting minutes of August 10, 2020, and September 2, 2020, and the workshop minutes of August 25, 2020, and the warrants of September 9, 2020.
Again.
Be a second. Okay, vote. Kathy, yes. Amy? Okay, I'm looking down, so unmute.
Yes.
Okay, Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yeah.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Steve?
Ed Sonnet, we lost Steve.
Uh-uh. Okay, so we'll mark him as A. Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Okay, so now items to be considered for future or next agenda. Where did I put that piece of paper? Oh, here it is. Okay, so. And this is not the special meeting. This would be for our regular meeting on the 23rd. Um, so what we have down there, Brooke, is citizens meet greet pilot proposal. Is that something? I'm looking at the, the, the.
We can talk offline about that.
Okay, um, district improvement plan, business manager report with all of those things. Um, we'll put protocols back on there, see if we can knock one or two of those off our list. Let's see. Um, here are the other things that are on the parking lot, school start times, that's a biggie. Um, and I think we wait till things are a little more settled before we get into that. Preschool extended day fee review, but that's usually like November-ish.
Yeah, I, I think right now, I, I don't know that we're ready to go to have that discussion, to be honest with you.
Full committee policy on responding to constituents. Uh, maybe that's something that communications can look at at some point. Building rental rates, is that even a thing now with our current state of affairs, Brooke?
Building which?
Rental rates.
Yeah, we're not, that's not even on our radar at all right now for this year.
Okay, policy is working on student voice. The high school report card, that's not for a while, right?
Yeah, we're not sure what they're doing right now with that either.
And then we have coronavirus preparedness report out. I mean, we're gonna do, we have to do an update every meeting about how the school is going and health and wellness. I think just a quick check-in on facilities, health and wellness moving forward. Um, 503C foundations for donation acceptance. I don't even remember where that came from.
I think that I, I think I initiated that a long time ago, just talking about, do we have a foundation? Like some school districts have really powerful foundations with endowments and.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
We can kick it down the road.
Keep it on the list. Regional agreement amendment, Mary, that's something that, that you have championed. And maybe you and I can talk about it at personnel and bring it in.
Okay, because we haven't heard from the state, back from the state at all, and that's the first step.
Okay. All right, state needs to let us know. Okay, then here's that green initiatives, district-wide report out, Brooke and you and I will talk about that. Uh, legal training with Mike Macaro. I think that we did that in December last year. I'll see if we can engage him. And then, um, the promoting equity acceptance and racial justice PD. Um, when Mary and I meet on the 16th, we can talk more about looking at some of the offerings that the Ideas Division of EDCO can, can provide for us. Um, did anybody have anything else that they wanted to add? Leah?
So, um, we, you talked about the, um, uh, every time we have a meeting, we're gonna have a share out about the school health and wellness. But I think that what we wanted was a share out about the remote plan at the high school and kind of.
Right, next meeting, yep.
Um, so Steve will be presenting on the, those so-called on-demand days and then possibly like some sort of consideration of pivoting toward hybrid. And at what point is it November? Is it January? Whatever.
All right, so on-demand days, remote schedule at high school. Um, planned and actual. And then the last one was transition to hybrid.
Yeah, I, I made note of all of those.
Okay, so, but I've got that out for the tour. I'm just going down this list to see if things stay or go. Okay, Amy?
Um, on that note, one thing that I came to, I'm hoping to get more details on, is the plan for bringing for Wednesdays at the high school. That, that schedule seemed very I was confused by it. And I, I thought there was an allusion to bringing in kids to the labs, that type of thing.
All right, we can certainly do that. Um, the other thing, and Amy, I'm gonna steal your thunder a little bit, that Amy and I had a conversation about. And this has to do with conversations about the anxiety that, that people have about not knowing and how they get information. And she brought up the term managing client expectations. And I think that looking at, because I know that um, we do our best to communicate as much as we can, as often as we can. And sometimes, um, you know, we hit all the targets, other times, uh, um, some things fall through the cracks. But if we could, and maybe this is another, Mike, your, your communications, our committee is getting additional things. But if that could be part of the communications, and Amy, you, um, can help with that if you're looking for some more input, how we manage folks' expectations for us, for our communications, et cetera. It might be worth exploring and, and talking about. And Amy, it sounds like she's got some experience with that. So you can add that to your list if you guys want to. Okay. So I think that's it, um, for tonight. It is 9:17. We're only 18 minutes late. I think it helped that Alita made us, us end later. So that helps us keep, stay on track. But, um, is there anything else for the good of the order?
I have one question. Um, could, could somebody send me the requirements we need to have a public meeting? In terms of, in terms of space?
Yes, I will have, when, when Brooke is working on the feasibility study, perhaps whoever is designated to do that could reach out to Rich, Brooke?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Are you talking about just the guidelines though from the state? Because you can just get it right online.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Where would I, where do I find that?
Yeah, with a link. You got an email from me yesterday.
Today. You got an email from Kathy today with it.
Or, or yeah, yeah.
Or yesterday, actually, yesterday.
Send it. Rich, I'll resend it.
Could I use the Google to find it?
Yeah, absolutely. If you, if you just even put in, um, like something simple like mass, um, COVID guidelines, meeting guidelines, it'll, it'll populate instantly.
Okay, I'll resend it to Rich.
Okay, I can too, yeah.
All right, I will.
Thank you.
To adjourn.
Thanks again to everybody, by the way. Thank you. You guys are doing great.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:19.
Don't move.
All right, who moved? Who so moved?
I did.
Joseph did.
Okay, Joseph, thank you. Second? Amy, second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Kathy, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yeah.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Steve, did he come back?
No, we have not seen Steve return.
Uh, Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Thank you so much, everyone. Appreciate all your time and effort. Thanks, Pat and Todd and Alita and all the wonderful central office people for your time and efforts. See you soon. Good night.